Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order too, so.
Okay.
Do you wanna, yeah, just wait a few seconds there. And we still have a couple of other procedural things before we get to your report, so.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, December 7th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
Silent meditation?
Silent meditation. Today, we want to remember that today is Pearl Harbor Day. Something that seems, you know, very far in the past, but we never want to forget what happened at Pearl Harbor and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice that day and beyond in World War II. We'd also like to remember the mom of the mayor's chief of staff, Renee Lemus, her mother. Ina de George died a few days ago. And it's a real loss, obviously, for that family. If you have a chance, you can read the obituary, which is a wonderful story about an immigrant coming to this country from her small hometown in Italy and making a new life for herself. So, does anybody else have anybody to remember?
Moment of silence, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, first of all, thankful and grateful that you have assembled us in these chambers today. We ask that by the power of your spirit, you help us make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the residents of the city of Erie. We ask that you comfort those who are mourning, salute those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, and be with those who are less fortunate. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
And now we do the approval of the minutes in the bills before we'll do the presentation.
We have a motion by Mr. Troop, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, to accept the minutes of the November 16th City Council meeting and bills for payment on December 9th and 16th, 2022. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
And I know we have some people here for repository sales, which we will get to after we hear the presentation on a pilot project to try some innovative things with recycling. Sheri Mason, Dr. Mason, do you want to introduce it, or? Everybody will be able to see the report also. Thank you to Penn State Barron students for doing this deep dive into recycling and garbage, actually.
Wait, waste diversion, yeah, so it's my pleasure. Thank you so much for allowing us time at your City Council meeting today. And it is with great pleasure that I introduce half of my Sustainability 200, Sustainability Leadership Course, who's been looking at the pilot data that we collected this summer as part of this waste diversion study. And I will turn it over to them to present.
Good morning, everyone. As Dr. Mason says, we all just want to sincerely thank you for your time today. And unfortunately, all of our group members couldn't make it because we're nearing finals week here at Penn State Barron. But we're very excited to present our research that we've conducted over the semester to you all.
Okay, and maybe, would you be able to say your name and just introduce the people that you do have here, even though all the names are in the study, so?
Yeah, of course. So my name is Carolyn McGee. Okay, this is Non-Non, Landis, Kelly, and Benny.
Thank you.
And then, of course, accompanied by Dr. Mason. So, on the screen now, we just have a preview of points of what we will be exploring throughout this presentation today. The background of our study, the goal that this whole thing has been to accomplish, as well as the results of our pilot program and the cost-benefit analysis, ending with ultimately what we will recommend in the return on investment for the city of Erie.
First, we'll be looking at landfills and the municipal solid waste within them. That's just another word for trash. Would you kind trust this? There, I guess. This graph shows the total waste and the waste per capita per day. This shows that total waste continues to increase, that's the blue line, while waste per capita has plateaued at around 4.5 pounds per day. This shows the total waste generation for one year in the United States, which equals 292 million tons of waste. Of that 292 million tons of waste, 50% is sent to landfills. Here's a graph that shows the total waste that is sent to landfills and how it's categorized. We can see that food waste is 24% of what is sent to landfills, and glass is 5%. Glass, food makes up the biggest chunk. Our goals for this project were to decrease waste management costs. To do this, we want to increase waste diversion of food waste and glass waste. We chose food waste because it is the biggest trunk that is being sent to landfills and could save the city the most money. Glass waste was chosen because we have the business and infrastructure to handle recycling of it.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the City of Erie pilot study that was conducted this summer. It was a three-week curbside food composting glass recycling project that occurred in two different neighborhoods. So we consulted, or Dr. Mason had consulted with the City of Erie to select these two neighborhoods, one of which has a high recycling rate and one of which has a low recycling rate. So between the two of them, we would have kind of an idea of what we could expect across the city. So, to contact the people in the neighborhood, there was a team that went out and canvassed doors, and they knocked on over 800 doors and spoke to people and left flyers at about 50% of those and spoke to about 30% of all the residents. About 20% were not talked to, and no flyers were left either because the house was for sale, condemned, or not a single family resident. So, once people were talked to, they were able to sign up for the program. We had 104 households across the two neighborhoods sign up, and then they received a bucket with a lid and liner for food compost and a bucket for glass recycling. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about the results of that study. It spanned over three weeks, and so we then had an average those for kind of a good view. And there was a few interesting things that we found from that. One being that our food compost was lower, I'm sorry. Sorry, that the lower recycling neighborhood actually had a higher rate of recycling than the higher neighborhood. Food compost increased each week, and Week 2 had the highest glass recycling of all the weeks. And so, kind of, we use these numbers to show the variability of the glass recycling and food composting across the weeks.
To address that variability, we looked at different data sets also to compare it to national, state, and regional levels. For the national data, we obtained it from the EPA. The state and regional data, we obtained from the Waste Characterization Study that came out this year. And the local data, of course, from the pilot program. So, that's the data you just saw, but on a pounds-per-person-per-day level. The rest of those are the national, state, and regional. The table contains the average amount of glass and food compost a person produces on a daily basis in pounds. And below, the solid bar represents the amount of food compost, and the stripy-looking ones represent the amount of glass. Using that data, we were able to estimate the amount of waste we would be able to divert from the waste stream, also using the City of Erie population. So, we estimated that the amount we'd be able to divert ranges from about 6,000 tons a year using the state data, and about 14,000 tons a year based on the pilot data, which these translate into about $350,000 in saving based on state data and almost $800,000 in savings per year based on the pilot data. These averaged out to be about 11,000 tons a year that can be diverted from the waste stream and an associated savings of $620,000 a year.
Now, I'm gonna divert your attention over to something that I'm sure is on everyone's mind, so how much money is this all gonna cost us? So, the long-term increase in tipping fees has been 3.5% annually. The City of Erie is currently paying a tipping fee of $55.90 per ton. Focusing on just compost, this is around 8,000 tons of food waste going into our landfill every year. Handling this differently would save the City of Erie $450,000 annually. Reverting our attention over to glass, although glass yields a lower percentage compared to compost, it's infinitely recyclable, and it also would help local industries. Not to mention, it would also yield the city a savings of $160,000 a year. Now, the baseline behind our cost-benefit analysis was to mechanize and containerize. Doing so would increase recycling rates within the community. It would yield savings for the city as well as improve employee safety. On top of that, this will all be done while decreasing the amount of litter seen in our neighborhoods. So, for the upfront carts, costs, we have carts. Carts vary in size from 32 to 96 gallons. Of course, there's a price difference between the two. In our analysis, we assumed a 64-gallon mid-sized cart, which costs $50 each. We accounted for an annual replacement rate of 2% for lost, stolen, or damaged carts. For mechanization, it would be helpful in reducing the amount the city has to pay in workers' compensation claims as well as overall labor. Food compost would not be collected the same way as what pros and glass should be collected. It would not be a curbside program. Rather, the City of Erie would work hand-in-hand with another local industry, Conservation Compost, to identify convenient drop-off locations throughout the city. This would cost $250,000 annually for the entire city to be a part of this program, and this is all offset by the costs and the savings in the tipping fees. As glass would need to be kept separate from other recyclables, we would alternate, one week glass, another week zero sort recyclables. There's no cost. For the offsets, there's a recycling partnership that Dr. Mason has been in correspondence with. They have deemed Erie to be a good candidate for the conversion grant due to our size as well as our current per-recycling rate. They would provide us $15 per cart. Every two years, both the City of Erie and Erie County can apply for state grants to assist cities with improving and supporting recycling. The city is eligible for $80,000, and the county is eligible for $175,000. So, we have two methods of incorporation of this plan. Our first method is the all-at-once method, which upfront costs roughly $2.4 million. Between the carts, which we are assuming everyone needs two carts for trash and one for recycling, there's, mechanizing the trucks is also gonna cost, and then have a cost. And then, between the grants, the annual compost collection cost also is going to have a cost of $250,000 for the drop-off locations. And cart replacement, which we accounted for about 2% of carts per year, is about $36,000. So, our initial start is about $2.4 million. So, based on the varying data, the program will make return on investment in varying lengths of time. The best-case scenario is based off the Erie pilot data, which is just under five years. Worst-case scenario is based on the PA data, which was an extreme outlier, as you saw in those other graphs, with a lot lower glass production rate. So, that would pay itself off in, over the course of 10 years. And then, the average, which is like the middle, but again, that outlier really skews the data, that would be about seven years for it to start making, profiting money off of the program. Some pros and cons to the all-at-once method. Some pros are, the benefits are reaped sooner because the entire city is incorporated into this program. There is greater involvement throughout the city, so instead of only educating a portion of the city, you're educating the whole city all at once, and you don't have to worry about that. Some cons are, it is more initial money upfront, which is obviously not great. Our second method is the phased-in method, which is incorporating one-fifth of the city every two years. So, this would cost $279,000 every two years. Again, sorry, for the carts and the cart tippers, which is the mechanization of trucks, that results in the $279,000. So, this one, this graph looks a little different because it is, you're spending money as you're adjusting. So, again, best-case scenario was the City of Erie pilot data, which pays itself off in just over four years. Again, the PA data, because it was an outlier, it does not pay itself off in over 10 years. And the average would be around six and a half years. Some pros and cons of the phased-in program are that it is less money spent at once. It is a great way to test the waters, which, instead of incorporating the entire city all at once, it is only one-fifth of the city at once. Some cons are, it takes prolonged incorporation, which means there's, you know, it's only one-fifth of the city at a time rather than the whole city all at once, which is some possible, there could also be like possible conspiracy theories where, why is this one-fifth selected over another fifth rather than, you know, like, why is my neighbor recycling when I'm not? Also, governments do change, and you don't want to have only two-fifths of the city through this program when that happens. Overall, our recommendation is all at once. We believe the better, it has a greater environmental impact as well as it's easier to educate the whole city all at once rather than educating one-fifth of the city at a time on how to recycle. I would like to thank you for your time, and open the floor to questions.
Okay, questions from council? Or comments? Thank you.
I did have one question.
One of the things I just wanted to say, Michael, is that this initiative, and thank you to Chuck Nelson for, as the liaison to Public Works for partnering and really shepherding this through. But, one of the things that strikes me is, separate from the particular issue that you tackled, is that we have a lot of expertise at our universities, and we could find other ways to use young people to do this kind of deep dive into particular issues in terms of, you know, our own capacity building. So, I didn't mean to interrupt, Michael, I just wanted to really thank you for stepping up and giving us a lot of food for thought, so to speak, so.
I'm sorry. Nice job, by the way, very nice job. I saw the carts and the cart tippers. Did you figure in the cost of the trucks to pick up those cart tippers? Carts, or is that?
So, the cart tippers are an add-on to the existing trucks that we already have. So, rather than by purchasing new trucks, what we accounted for in our cost-benefit analysis was just retrofitting the trucks we already have with cart tippers. So, it would reduce the number of personnel per truck from three people down to two people. We did not account for those additional decrease in costs for personnel, so that's an added benefit. Another thing that we didn't account for was the decrease in workman's compensation costs. Because when people aren't doing it, you have less workman's compensations.
Thank you very much.
Michael, go ahead. So, a couple of questions, 'cause I'm, first of all, excellent job, thanks for taking on the pilot. Because I don't know, but when we're talking about diverting food waste from the landfill, I understand from, you know, from the, when it gets there, it weighs a certain amount, and that's what we pay for. But if it's organic material, theoretically, would it go from, you know, like ashes to ashes, dust to dust, and go back to nothing and back into the air?
Waste within a landfill, naturally, it would. Not outside of a landfill, naturally, it would decompose, it has oxygen. But within a landfill, there's very little oxygen, so the process changes. And it, have it written, it produces methane, which is a greenhouse gas. And also, there's another issue, there are liners at the bottom of the landfill to stop leachate from getting through. Although, those can't really be 100% all the time, so there is gonna be a little bit of leakage, which can ruin the area. can ruin the area. And it's estimated, one-point-eight million acres of habitat has been lost due to landfill construction within the United States. But I guess the big one would be the, what was it?
A follow-up question.
Oh, yeah.
And so, a lot of modern houses and apartments are equipped with garbage disposals. And so are we recommending against using those systems?
Garbage disposals, actually, if you ask your waste management gurus, they'll tell you that they're not, they're not great to, to use. I mean, that, that just goes to the wastewater treatment plant, but they also have lots of issues associated with, with garbage disposals. Most people, to be honest, put it in the trash. That's why you see it as such a high component of both waste generation and what ends up in a landfill. Just to reiterate what he says, the landfills don't, there's very little decomposition that happens in landfills, and we're actually running out of space, right? Especially on the East Coast, we're running out of landfill space. We really need to, as a collective whole, as a nation, be rethinking what goes into landfills.
With, with your bi-weekly pickup model that was introduced as a suggestion, is there any consideration that that may reduce our participation rate in recycling and maybe offset some of the benefit?
I don't think so because of the carturizing and the mechanizing. According to the recycling partnership, I mean, the reason why we're such a great candidate for their grants is because our recycling rate is so abysmal. They were, they said, you know, we could easily triple or quadruple what we are getting in terms of recycling rates if we just simply mechanize and containerize our processing system, how we collect, our collection system. So I think that going to bi-weekly, I don't think that the off, that would, I, I, I think with the increased participation rates by containerizing, it would, you know, kind of offset any kind of diminishment of decrease by doing it bi-weekly.
Could you tell us a little bit more? Mill Creek and a number of other municipalities are already doing the food part of this, correct?
Compost.
And that's with the company, the startup company that you?
Conservation Compost out of Sager Town. We're very, we're extremely fortunate in here that we have Conservation Compost. I cannot stress that enough. So, you know, one of the reasons why you see food waste as such a big component of what's in a landfill is because most places do not have industrial composting. And we do. So, yeah, they, they're a local startup. They started in twenty-twenty, just as the pandemic hit, kind of poor timing on that part. And so they have, they have partnered with Mill, Mill Creek and, I think, Edinburgh. We had planned to talk with them more about that. Unfortunately, we didn't actually get to interview them as part of this study because they had a, a family, some family issues that, that precluded that. So I don't know a lot of details. It would have been nice to get some more details from them on how that is going, but it's the same kind of idea as what we're proposing here. They're not quite ready to do a curbside program, so they would like to, to do a drop-off, some drop-off locations within the city as a step toward eventually creating a curbside program.
One of the things you mentioned is that the amount of food, I mean, it was a three-week program. I participated in it. And you said the amount of food went up. Was it in both neighborhoods or just one neighborhood?
Every, both neighborhoods, they increased over time. And this is something that in, in conversations prior to us getting started with Conservation Compost, they, they had noted in these previous experiences, is that as people get more used to what can go into a food compost, you see them composting more. You know, they, they're, they're still fighting, you know, kind of the backyard compost, you can't do meat, you can't do dairy, you can't do bones. You know, there's a lot you can't, you can't do biodegradable plastics, right? But in an industrial composting facility, you can do all of those. And so it becomes an education. So I think with the variability that you saw in the data from the state to the nation and the amount of food waste, that's really about an awareness of what you can recycle. So the fact that our pilot was kind of in the middle there really shows the potential of what we could be doing in terms of food waste. I think we would continue to see that food waste increase as we, as we did it over time, and people became more comfortable and more familiar with it.
I can attest that that, you know, the first week, it's like, wait a minute, I can really throw, and, and I could really throw this in here. It was sort of a, not a guilt feeling, but a just kind of a yucky feeling, like, am I doing this correctly?
Right.
And I wondered, well, do you have another, do you teach sustainability again next semester? Or is this a course?
I do it every year. I do it every fall.
Every fall, okay. I just wondered, is this tied in in any way? I know there've been some efforts to, before we're talking about food going into being thrown away, did you have any communication with anyone about how food can be redeployed to help feed the hungry? I, that's probably different that, I know it was different than what you were doing, but I believe that there might be some efforts by maybe some of the cohort at the Jefferson Educational Society has been looking at things like that. Or is that something that would kind of be built in in terms of what you're allowed to share with, you know, shelters or whatever? Not you personally, and not this program, but it strikes me that we do waste a lot of food. And I think at the commercial level, there's efforts to say, where can this go? Was that anything that you came across in your research or anything? How do we, how do we, food that could be actually used rather than thrown away?
There's a great program in Pittsburgh called Four, I think it's out of Pittsburgh, Four Twelve Food Rescue, and it's an app where they use volunteers. And basically, somebody can say, hey, I have a bunch of food, and a volunteer can say, I'll pick it up and I'll deliver it. And so I know that that's a program that actually Second Harvest has looked at. There's some people locally that are looking to create a similar program here in the City of Erie, using that same kind of technology. Obviously, you know, diverting food waste, you know, first thing is not to make food waste, right? That's the ideal. Second is that it goes to people who need it. And then the third is, is obviously composting it versus landfilling it. So that was what this study focused on, as opposed to kind of food rescue. But I do know that there are people locally who are looking at food rescue. Yeah.
Thank you.
There's, the organization locally, the Lake Erie Food Rescue, they have successfully gotten donations from businesses before it actually gets thrown away, and they have been donating to community members. They do have a Facebook page. I follow it. So that's how I know of the program you're talking about. But yeah, any way that we can save the food before it gets to landfill, landfill, so that it can actually help the community that's hungry is beneficial versus just throwing it away. But we do have something locally that just started.
Hey, you guys showed a chart. You said one neighborhood was really high already and one was, is there a way that, I'm an educator, so like, that you can show as people start progressing? Like, people like feedback, like, hey, our neighborhood, like, see where we're at when we first start, and we're starting to get better, and we can actually?
If we could mechanize it, I was actually just having a conversation with my husband about this. I would think as you mechanize and containerize, so the containers can have a built-in RFID tags built into the containers. And then when you mechanize, you could actually weigh what is in the trash, what is, and you could keep better data. Right now, we don't really have that data. It's, it was definitely sitting down with Public Works and them saying, from our experience, very anecdotal, right? Is from our experience, this is a high recycling-rate neighborhood, and this is a low recycling-rate data. But it's very anecdotal. We don't really have good data on how much trash a given neighborhood is producing, how much recycling a given neighborhood is producing. So, but if we were to mechanize, containerize, that would allow us to maybe start getting some of that data. And almost like with your, your electric bill, where you're like, well, you know, your neighbors are only using this much electricity, and it kind of guilts you into being a little bit better. If we could have some of that data, then yeah, we could try and use some of that data to encourage that recycling. And so that's part of that, kind of doing it all at once and having this kind of rollout of an education campaign. And then that education campaign changing over time as we get more data, as we know more stuff. I think that that would be a key part of that.
Yeah, I think it also could be a way, like, a neighborhood could, get like some, like a way, a little pride in your neighborhood, like, you know, our neighborhood's doing this. Especially neighborhoods that maybe in the city that feel like they're left out or, you know, not seen as highly as other neighborhoods.
Yeah.
That could be small victories for them, so that's something.
Absolutely. I think our, our low recycling-rate neighborhood should be challenging the high recycling, like, look at us, we did better in the study than you guys did.
That's, that's a part of my neighborhood watch, and then the mayor's neighborhood, so we could.
Yeah, I know. We got, we got some.
Lay down some bets, huh?
I don't want that bet. I was on the low one. It's very unlikely I beat his.
You did better, we did better in the study. We, you know, our, our neighborhood did better in the study than.
Because this is so interesting, we have the hard copy, we have the, the link. Where would somebody who is not able to be here today or could be watching our meeting online access this? Because I think sharing it, there's, it's a long report, actually.
It is.
And I think it would be good to have other people make sure that they can have a look at it. So is it available on Penn State Baron website, or is it something we would share?
You can. So this is a, what I provided you guys is a draft report. The students have until mid-December to make changes to that, so there might be some, obviously, the data's not going to change, but there might be some small editorial changes that happen. Once it becomes finalized, I'll send it back out to all of you. I'll send it to every person who participated in the study as well. We do not currently have a website where this is located, but people could contact me personally and get it from me. So my email address is sam7201@psu.edu. So anybody who wanted it, again, could email me at sam7201@psu.edu, and I'm more than happy to share anything that has to do with this study.
I'd like to give a little bit of a narrative of how this came together and point a couple things out. You know, this is something where, as I was coming on to council and still sitting in the cheap seats of watching how the budget session rolled out, and as the garbage refuse fees were discussed, I, I wasn't particularly happy with, with outcomes. I felt like we, that in the midst of that compromise, we took like the worst of both worlds. So as, as Liz became president, I, I made the ask of trying to get a good look at that and to find some solutions. When I went to refuse and asked them about that, they expressed how expensive it would be to do a feasibility study and to see if my anecdotal ideas are worth anything. And it was, and it became an obvious barrier, a hurdle, and it looked like we'd get two years before we could even consider implementing anything. I talked to Dr. Mason there shortly, shortly thereafter, actually met her shortly thereafter, reaching out and discussing this further. Did any of you guys actually pick up trash this? There we go. You, were you the one that called off the one day that I had to fill in?
Yeah, you were at main campus.
Oh, no kidding, really?
Yes.
Oh, so some of the days I filled in and jogged up to the steps and dropped off buckets. Not too many. Don't, don't look at me too fondly. I did that for like a couple hours. I'm not, I'm not that good at it. So I mean, this was something that I think we, that we should be really excited about. And the biggest thing I'd like to point out to council is, I, I didn't want to come and complain about stuff without bringing a solution. And the number that we're talking about for refuse increasing this year was what, five-hundred-and-eighty-something-thousand? And this is a six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar savings. But the upfront cost and what we have in our enterprise fund, that's, that's the challenge we're looking at. So we're going to be voting on refuse fees, and I would have loved to have sat here today and said, hey, look, everyone, I won. I found you guys a solution. But the upfront cost is, is something where we need to have a strong enterprise fund to be able to make these changes. So I'm, I'm still going to be voting in favor, I'm not sure, I think, am I allowed to say that right now? I'm still going to be voting in favor of the refuse fee increase, even though we've brought this solution, which a little more than offsets that increase, because we don't, we need to have the enterprise funds to implement it. And, and I, I really, I wanted to come in here and just have like an obvious grand slam and, and just win. But, but that's, that's the hurdle that we look at. So I really thank you for, for making the solutions backed with facts instead of anecdote. And, and I appreciate the work that you all put in for free so much. So, so really thank you, and I, I want to give you a hand.
Is anybody planning to go into an environmental or sustainability career?
I'm somewhat planning on it. My major's in project and supply chain management, so I'm looking at incorporating sustainability within the supply chain. So my minor's in sustainability and leadership.
Great.
I'm an ag engineering, an ag, an agricultural engineering major, so I'm working with sustainability on farms.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Oh, Helen's also a minor, but she's shy. Kelly is, Kelly is actually just a high school student, so I got my claws into her early. So we'll see what happens with Kelly.
Where at?
Your class.
How did you get involved?
She was in my class.
I was dual enrollment major.
Or dual enrollment, not major, just dual enrollment student. So she's, she's both a high school and college student at the same time.
This is an amazing story all around.
Yeah. Plus, we went through the semester, so.
Thank you again. Thank you, Chuck, for leading the charge on this. And, and, but we do have the potential, not for this year, but we, now Chuck has put out the challenge there for us in terms of the enterprise dollars to tackle this, so.
And there's a lot of federal funding coming down between the infrastructure bill and the, you know, the, there's a lot of money coming down the pipeline.
The Inflation Reduction Act.
Yeah, the Inflation Reduction Act, yeah. I couldn't remember the other one, but yeah. Between those two, there's a lot of money coming down in this space. We've actually already applied to one grant through the NOAA Marine Debris Program, and I'm waiting to hear on that. That would provide something like a million dollars toward just doing exactly what is proposed in this plan. But there's another couple of grants that are due in January that I've tried to start putting together a, a committee to, to talk about proposing those. That would have to be proposed through the city, though I can't propose it based upon, it's a, you know, it's through municipalities, so. So we're looking at, at, you know, kind of grant funding. And anything that you guys can do to help us support those, those grants applications is, is very helpful.
I know we spent, we devoted probably more time than I had anticipated to this, this morning. No, that's not, but you can see that it does overlap with our budget discussions and with looking forward, so. Great, great, great way to start off our morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, Lori, I think we go to repository sales?
Yes.
Correct?
If you're here to speak on a repository, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good morning, everybody. How you guys doing? Today I'm speaking, or my address is eight thirteen East Eighteenth Street. That's where we operate out of. And I'm here to talk about property. It's, it's a green space lot right now that we're trying to get out of the repository sale. So in a nutshell, it's, it's a property that is near all our other adjacent properties. We're just trying to work on cleaning up the neighborhood, just keeping it a nice place for everyone. And our goal is to just keep the neighborhood better and just slowly make it better for everyone else. But one nice thing with this property is if, if we do receive it, there's no building on it, there's no structure, we don't have to board up any windows, we don't have to do a whole lot of cleaning up to it. And what we do now, we have Creative Landscaping, they're actually a neighbor, and they take care of all of our current properties and lots. And if there's any issues with the lots, then they'll take care of it. And/or we will too. We're always checking on trash in the area just to keep it nice for us and all the employees and neighbors.
Lori, do you want to ask the questions that we always ask?
Do you have a sheet there? I think he did answer a lot of them.
Okay.
You're from Paul's Real Estate, which is pro-waste.
Yep, it's another company.
And it's adjacent to your property. And you have a bid of five-hundred dollars, and you have a maintenance plan with your neighbor that's... Any other questions?
Any other questions from council?
What's the address of the property?
The property?
It's a vacant lot between East Nineteenth and four-hundred block.
The, you want the legal description? I have that right here.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else to speak on a repository sale? Anyone else on repository sales?
I can have a question. So this is East 19th Street. Most, most of your current property faces East 18th Street. So is this going to be a potential expansion of the property you're owning and controlling and potentially would like to build on? Or so just, as a plan, I know you're in the neighborhood and you're close to this location. I just wondered at this point in time if there's a plan.
There's no short-term plan. I mean, I bet you it's five, 10 years out. Our main facility is about four blocks away from that lot. So that's kind of where the, all the main functions of the business go on. At that, we call it the 800 block, 700 block, 600 block. But between the eight and 700 block is kind of where our main functions of the business go on, the daily functions.
So now I think we're going to move to public comments?
Hello, Art E. Paul, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie, PA. Honored councilmen, esteemed councilwomen, Mr. Mayor, Administration, I want to thank you for your efforts this past year. It's not easy, and there's no glory. So I appreciate what you're doing. I want to thank you also for your upcoming consideration of the EAC, Environmental Agency. It's really needed. I saw today where 78% of the population considers very highly climate initiatives. And so to have something for the city that's like an environmental filter, not only for just general use, but also for environmental justice areas, greatly needed. And I appreciate your consideration of the initiative. This, just this past several days, I spoke regarding the HUD and the ARP funds, about $3 million. I suggested universal basic income as a use, and also the tiny home initiative. I found out that the UBI may not be something that could directly be used, but ancillary to other funds being used. And those are initiatives that I continue to want to bring to your attention. Also, something I haven't mentioned in a while is CBAs for every benefit that we give out as a city. And there's a lot of them. We ought to be taking 1%, 2%, 3% to use in neighborhoods and communities. I don't want you to forget about that. Also, Civilian Police Review Board is high on my list of wants and needs. And so I hope you continue to give that some consideration. Also, youth investment in community centers is very necessary. The more we invest in our youth, the less we have to invest in, I think, police and crime patrol. Because if you give youth something to do, give them good education, they're not going to turn to crime. And then of course, there's Article 127, which we need to act upon. Most of you know what that is. It's something that was enacted several decades ago, but never implemented. And so we need to move on that. And I trust that we will. Have a, a nice end of the year, and I look forward to a prosperous new year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Art.
Hi, my name is Jacob Jones. I live at 1403 East 38th Street. And I'm here in my role as Executive Director of Community Access Media, which is currently operating the equipment and running the stream right now for people to watch. But I, I came here to kind of give an end of the year update, talk a little bit about Community Access Media, because we do receive funding from the City of Erie in a yearly stipend, an allied item in the budget, but also quarterly production fees for government productions, like city council sessions and the budget meeting that'll happen shortly after this. So I was asked to kind of talk a little bit of what our full capabilities are, and then I just wanted to give you some stats, but we did this year. So currently, Community Access Media operates two cable channels. We have one with Spectrum, 1021, and Vnet Channel 2. Right now, that has a reach pretty much throughout all of City of Erie. And then additionally, we are on Apple TV and Roku, both of which are free applications for people to get on. And we operate a 24/7 video-on-demand live streaming service. So meetings like this, we typically take them back to our office. Within two to three hours, they are edited, uploaded, scheduled to air, and then also available on video demand. And we attach the PDF agendas of meetings and any additional things that were gone over to those as well. So that way, even if people cannot watch this live, we keep those up there for, at this point, we've had the system for three years and has capability of keeping stuff up for five to 10 years. So this information is a way for people to constantly check on that as well. We also cover pretty much every meeting that happens in these council chambers, mayor's press conferences, remotes, and everything like that that the City of Erie does, and also productions or chronic quests, last-minute meetings that come up and that kind of thing. We also have a wide-ranging member base. So there's 193 members within the City of Erie who produce content with us, visit our facilities, and, you know, provide a commercial-free, unbiased network for people to access. So the information and programs we put up are completely commercial-free. They are very lightly regulated by FCC regulation, but it's a way for the citizens and the City of Erie to raise and empower their voices on a platform that doesn't have to be caught up in any type of, you know, social media or commercials or anything like that. So some of the stats we went over this year for 2022. So far in 2022, we've recorded over 280 hours of City of Erie meetings, between the 14 to 15 different meetings we cover, plus additional productions as well, including Blues and Jazz Festival and Celebrate Erie, which we livestream and offer at no cost to people throughout the city and region if they cannot come. We had 47 different educational classes totaling over 100 hours of professional development and educational training that were offered. 80% of that was offered at completely no cost to people in the City of Erie and our member base. We hosted five local interns from high schools and colleges, which resulted in over 600 hours of professional development and experiential learning in the media development field and also technology fields. We provided $1.3 million of in-kind services to the City of Erie and its residents, and that was in return for $125,000 of production fees and operating fees that we do, based on current market values. Our 102, 192 members so far this year have used our facilities for a combined total of 5,438 hours, and rented out our equipment at no cost for 27,935 hours, for a total of 33,373 hours of use so far in this year. And our members also totaled over 125 hours of volunteer and community service with Community Access Media. We aired 1,122 unique programs and shows that were all available and currently available on our video-on-demand through our website, which is kmere.org. Our video-on-demand averaged about 356 views per month. And that's part of the in-kind services we provide to the City of Erie. We maintain that system for about $75,000 a year, plus all the other associated softwares and wages to keep that running. And to give you an idea of some of what the most popular programming was that people are watching on there, the four categories that are most popular are local government. So we carry Democracy Now! and The White House Chronicles, daily and weekly, so that people can be connected to national-level issues, again, in an unbiased, non-commercial way. Also, city council study sessions, people love those. So keep on doing what you're doing. We also have a, a very large amount of religious programs. So we have 256 unique contributors of religious-based programming and faith-based programming that is available for video-on-demand. And this year alone, there was over 1,400 hours of that program submitted to us. Some of those popular ones included Dennis Perez Ministries, Team of Faith, McLean Church, Light of the City, and so many others I could keep naming. Our entertainment category was very popular as well. We have a lot of local film makers and creatives who use our platform to elevate their work. Very hard for artists and visual artists to get anywhere on YouTube unless they're incredibly popular or crack some kind of algorithm and go viral. So we give them a platform that they can highlight their work locally. Some of those included a great-named one, Ravioli Beast, which everybody loved. Health Hits Experience, which is a, a local Dungeon and the Dragon group that does a fantastic role-playing show every week. And also our recent partnership with the Chickasaw Nation Film Productions to have these on there as well. And then finally, our educational category, which included the Beehive Network Showcase, highlighting local startups and college students creating some of the most innovative products in our area. Jefferson Educational Society Lectures, Artist Talks with Erie Arts and Cultures, and Both Sides of the Bar, which is an educational program about correctional issues within the United States and Pennsylvania. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Might you want to send those stats to council members? I think that, one of the reasons I think it would be helpful is as we move forward, you know, we, we also provide Zoom links. And I think looking at who's watching live, on your channels, you don't have the ability to, you know, speak to council. But I think it would be good for us to have that information. So thank you very much. I learned a lot.
Good morning. My name's Julia Kalippa. I live at 623 East 25th Street. And I'm here today about civil rights violations and abuses of power within Erie County. I, myself, was a victim of a false conviction several years ago. And I served three and a half years in jail for arson. For an investigation that the Erie Fire Department refused to do, my site sat for 50 days, and Allstate came and declared arson. Fif, what is it? A year later, they came and they arrested me, took my 10-month-old baby, took my other four kids away from me, put me in jail. They convicted me while I was in the hospital. You know, then here we go. All my kids were gone. My daughter Lily, in November of this past year, was molested by her father, Michael Hewlon, and the Erie Police.
I think you have to be very careful about making those type of allegations in a public forum, okay?
Okay, but the Erie Police never did an investigation of the father. And he's still walking the street and still around minors. And the issue is that we're talking about hiring more police officers, and the Erie Police aren't doing anything about these children that are being abused. And my daughter was one of those victims. Okay? And I'd like an investigation done into why he's still walking the streets and nothing's being done. Okay? And then we have another issue that just happened this past week in regards to OCY, where they came and they knocked on, on the door of Montris Bolden, who was a victim previously, who was beat up for, he resisted arrest, and he received a $125,000 payout from the City of Erie for his beating from the Erie Police. And he wouldn't cooperate with OCY. They wanted to take his baby. They wanted, you know, to do a drug test and do what OCY does. And he refused to cooperate. And so the Erie Police handcuffed him, and they took him to the Erie, the Erie Police Station down here. And he refused to cooperate. His baby was at his mom's house. He was having a beer, which anyone can do. He's a hard worker. He works 40 hours a week. He's a justifiable man, you know, Montris Bolden. He's a good guy. And, and he said, I'm giving you my mom's address. My baby's fine. I'm, I'm relaxing. And they just kept threatening him, intimidating him. And the police officer apparently that was with, one of the ones that was with him, took his belt off and put it on the desk and quit, is, is what Montris relayed to me. And so there's some kind of abuse of power and civil rights violations that are happening, to the extent that Montris told me that the police officer took off his belt and quit. So I don't know what's going on and what, what kind of, you know, powers are going on within this, this system. But somebody needs to investigate. I figured that I would bring it to your attention so that, you know, you could, you can investigate Michael Hewlon and the Montris Bolden issues, you know, in regards to these civil rights violations that are clearly going on. And there is a freedom of speech issue. And so, you know.
Yes, there is freedom of speech, but that doesn't mean that you can come up here and accuse somebody of, by name of child molesting. That, I wish our solicitor were here to, to step.
Well, it goes to defamation of character, slander, and libel. And if I said something that was a lie here in this forum, then they could sue me in court. And that doesn't have anything to do with it. So I mean, that, that's, I'm, I'm begging you guys to do something about that. And also in regards to the finances of the city, please allocate funds to social programs, not to, you know, the police, not to, you know, other programs that they don't need to go to. People are dying out there as far as, we have no money. We can't afford more taxes. We can't afford more sewer, you know, fees. We can't afford, you know, any more frivolous fees from the city. We already can't afford to pay our bills. Some people only get $700 a month. You know, that $700 a month doesn't go very far. We can't pay our taxes already. So please, you know, just act mercifully to people in the City of Erie. I beg you. And, and do your jobs. And thank you so much, and have a great day.
Good morning, Council. Mayor Schember. My name's Jenny Tompkins, Penn Future Campaign Manager for Clean Water Advocacy. I actually reside at 665 North Street, Meadville. I've been beating the drum about the Environmental Advisory Council for quite a few months now. I appreciate your ongoing support and respectfully request that a first reading of the currently drafted ordinance be on your next agenda for December 21st, which I believe it is slated to be. Wanted to give an update on some of the work that's been done around the EAC by myself and about a cohort of maybe 10 other advocates and representatives of area environmental organizations since I was last here to present. When I came to you for a public presentation a couple of months back, I'd already met with several key, key authorities, boards, and commissions that may be able to view their work from an environmental lens. Those, that relationship building, I think, will go a long way in an EAC being functional. I've also met and tried to contact about every single neighborhood and community-based organization that I could find on your great GIS map that I believe the planning department had made at one point. I've done outreach with potential candidates for an EAC or potential applicants. The group has met with We Can Serve PA again, that manages the EAC network of about 150 EACs across the Commonwealth. And they're more than willing to come to Erie and do a strategic planning session that allows the EAC, city council, the mayor, the administration, and others to come together in a cooperative sense to set an agenda of work for this group. I encourage you to not limit the function of an EAC out of fear of some sort of environmental agenda or other forces that might be at play. When you read that ordinance, please know that other EACs are allowed to, to encourage and come up with their own agenda of work that is then approved and vetted through elected officials, administration, and staff. If they have the expertise that I think they could have and the breadth of expertise of environmental matters, they should be allowed to help set their own agenda. The other critical bit of news is since I've been doing research on EACs, I've become so invested in this framework that I actually became appointed to the Meadville EAC most recently. Meadville created an EAC to implement its own climate action plan, which took about two and a half years to develop with a lot of community support. And I know that the City of Erie recently announced that it's going to be embarking on a climate action planning process in partnership with Penn State Baron. So the EAC is a really great vehicle, once that climate action plan gets off the ground, to start to implement those initiatives. In many ways, those are policy-based. The Inflation Reduction Act, the infrastructure law, those are implementation measures that are one-time. To build capacity for the environment on an ongoing basis that can think about policy and the structure and frameworks we need to affect real change is just so important. I can't underscore that enough. So I wanted to give you an update. I have handouts, the roadmap that we created, that's been presented to the mayor and all of you, gave a refresher on that of where we stand. And then I also wanted to give a list of the types of expertise that our group decided might be good to consider for potential appointees. And this hopefully gives you a view of the diversity of expertise that could be lent to a group such as this. Having educators, policymakers, scientists, people who understand their own garden in their backyard. All of that applies to a group like this. So I'll leave these behind. Thank you again for your time, and I hope to be back on December 21st and have good news about a first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak?
Hello, I'm a citizen of Erie, Pennsylvania. I live on Glendale Avenue. And I've been having problems with some kids. They're throwing stuff in the yard, and they're calling people names. And, you know, they're aggravated and bouncing balls. And I have called the officers a couple of times, but they don't come out for certain things because it's not more important than other things. And I just wonder, what can you do about that? And maybe you should put some cameras. And maybe you should put some cameras out there, because it's pretty expensive buying that yourself, you know, and electricity and stuff. And I've bothered with these kids for a long time, and their parents don't see that. Do nothing about them and stuff. Just let them do what they want to do out there, 5:00 in the evening, go out there in, you know, all kinds of hours, 12-year-olds, eight, five, out there just doing things. And I don't want, I'm wondering why their parents don't do nothing about this. And I don't bother nobody, and a lot of people do. A lot of people give in to this and let them do what they want to do. And something should be done about, maybe more officers should be out there at certain times or something, and maybe more programs or something for them, or transportation for them to go places that they can't afford, you know, stuff like that. And, you know, people should not be, have to deal with these kids. Somebody should, you know, look after them and stop their parents going every four hours. Let's leave them by themselves.
Can you repeat your name and the address?
Ah, Sharon Woodard, 1938 Glendale Avenue. And I had talked to some of the counselors, but they said it was going to be in a meeting, and I never heard from them after that.
Have you signed in in the back?
Oh, would I?
Yeah, if you would, when you're finished, and then we'll have your phone number.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I sure appreciate it if you can't do anything about this. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who wants to speak? I know we have Freda Tepfer waiting in the waiting room on Zoom. Is there anybody else in person who wants to speak? Frank, I think we can go to Freda.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm not the most always tactful, but I think I have good ideas, and I think sometimes they even get adopted. I want to segue on to what Art was talking about. Today, you're going to be asked to approve a $1.5 million loan to the Rarick Company. It's part of the revolving loan fund. That's just an example of a substantial amount of money that we are helping to give to a business in the city. I believe they are building a building in my neighborhood where the Little League Field used to be. And once again, I think that we, the city should be using anything that they have control over, any funding source, LERTA, recommendations of RACP funds, any other kinds of funds that we have any control over to require CBA-type agreements, you know, who are they hiring, and other things like that. This is just another example. December 3rd was the International Day of People with Disabilities, so I'll bring up some related issues. I appreciate the efforts of those people who've been putting murals all over the city. They're quite striking, some of them very, very intensive colors. And there is one in particular that I'm concerned about that's highly geometric. Some of us who are sensitive to visual stimuli would have great difficulty walking past that or driving past that mural, maintaining our physical equilibrium. So, I really would like to see the city have some, I don't know if this fits in with your design rules or what, but there should be some consideration when all these murals are going up as to, along with the reader boards and the intensive lights and everything else going on in the city, what is the impact of these murals, these geometric murals, these intensive lights flashing on people who have sensitivity to visual stimuli? And you'd be surprised how many people that involves. Again, with the International Day of People with Disabilities, I look forward to the time where I do no longer see the word "handicapped" in ordinances, in whatever. If something's accessible, it's not handicapped accessible, it's just plain accessible. Handicapped is considered a relict and offensive term to describe people with disabilities. So, unless, I hope that you cull that term from your ordinances and avoid using it in the future. I'm also concerned, again, with how we manage construction in the city. The church at Sass and 10th, they have the most intense sidewalk closure now, but there's no warning along Sass between 9th and 10th, and there's no warning for the people walking west on 10th that they're going to encounter this sidewalk closure. I'm not sure what there is from the west. And the church and Prep have had the opportunity to close that sidewalk for months on end, months and months, the church has, and I really don't feel that should be the norm in this city. And I know it's a state project, but along West 12th Street, all the way from Green Garden to going into the east side, and I'm not sure how far east it goes, there's improvement of the traffic signals, and that's a great thing. But the way the installations have been done, the closures, there have been inadequate warning, inadequate opportunity for people to cross safely, and the placement of the various structures is problematic for people who are cane travelers, who are visually impaired, and for wheelchair travelers because of the kind of obstacles set up by the structures that are part of this installation. And I don't think this represents a real sensitivity to the issues created when that Traffic mitigation, I'll mention again that the city should have a traffic mitigation ordinance. It is something that the city has the ability to do within the third-class city and its type of third-class city. And when large projects or projects with a large amount of traffic come in, they should have to do things in order to mitigate the impact of the city's traffic.
Freda, I'm not sure if you heard, but the dinger went off, so...
No, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I thought you might not have heard. Thank you. I don't think there's anybody else online, and we're ready to continue.
Council File Number 16323, Official Ordinance 622022, An Ordinance Amending the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, Part 9 Utilities and Public Service Code, Title 5 Sewers and Water, Article 933 Sewer Rental, Section 93302 Sewer Rates. By increasing the meter quantity charge per 100 cubic feet per quarter for the first 70 cubic feet from $3.05 to $3.65, and the next 4,930 cubic feet from $291 to $347, and usage over 5,000 cubic feet from $2.71 to $3.25. And by increasing the large-volume user charges per 100 cubic foot per month for the first 23 cubic feet from $3.05 to $3.65, and the next 1644 cubic feet from $291 to $347, and all other usage over 1,667 cubic feet from $271 to $325. I can keep reading. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the Council File Ordinance 16323, and now known as Official File Ordinance 622022, be finally passed by City Council.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we go forward with this, we've not had the opportunity to sit down and offer cuts to the budget. If we go ahead with the vote, I will be a definite no on it. Mr. Keys brought up a point that maybe we should table this until we have the opportunity to sit down and discuss some cuts in the budget.
I, the cuts in the budget are not going to offset this. We've had a recommendation on increasing these rates. We haven't done it for a few years. You can still go and offer cuts to the budget. We have a budget session immediately following this meeting. We're meeting tomorrow night to hear from other departments. We're going to hear about ARP funding. The budget, final budget will be adopted on December 21st. I hate, I hate trite expressions, kicking the can down the road, but kicking this down by tabling it this time is kicking the can two weeks down the road. We had an extensive presentation last night from Public Works and from Finance justifying this increase as well as the next one. I think tabling it is just a way to get another chance for you to vote no. You're welcome to vote no today.
I move to table. I need a second.
Motion to table, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores?
No.
Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelsen?
No.
Mr. Troop?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Motion to table fails 2 to 5. Voting on the ordinance?
Is there no further discussion on that? What's the tape? All right. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? We can discuss it again, right? You know, this is another one of those areas that, the cuts we're talking about are from the general budget, where we do have a deficit that's being offset with one-time use, and we're talking about how that, you know, the issue is the transfer. You know, I think we all understand that. The sewer revenue, we get 64.6% of that from residents, because a lot of the nonprofits, a lot of the tax-exempt organizations pay into it, whereas with property tax, we're getting, you know, about almost 72% of that from residents when you factor in commercial properties and such. You know, that transfer is beneficial. So, I'm aware we're talking about, and we still have a $1.5 million revenue issue with sewer. So, even if we were to find that half million in general funds and X out the transfer, we'd still be $1 million short. But I'll argue that that transfer is beneficial, and I'm more concerned with the shortcoming in the budget that's being satisfied with water prepayments and ARP money. Now, this is another area like refuse that I said earlier. I was trying to find solutions. The only solution I was able to find, I found back in February, it was just an accounting issue where we used ARP money from infrastructure, and by cycling it through revenue replacement, we were able to get reimbursements from the tributaries to save city residents about $380,000. You know, I set out to try to get good solutions. That's all the more solution I was able to find, and I'm not, I'm comfortable taking it forward without any other further solutions in the Sewer Department as the liaison. That's, no one's coming with more solutions, though. That's what we've seen here from the actual enterprise fund. Anyways, that's all.
Madam President?
Yes.
All I'm saying is that there's a lot of money in that budget that could be moved around and taken off the shoulders of the poorer people in our city. I've said it from day one. The last time we talked about it, the mayor said, "Find the cuts." I'm trying to find the cuts, but we don't have a cutting session. So, I tried, guys.
I just wanted to echo what Mr. Brzezinski's point is, that we want to create the budget like it's not a sum of a total. And while we need our sewer, the money from our sewers, we're pretty much where we cannot cut there, and we need the raises. But to treat it as it's not a sum of the whole is just not accurate. And so, while the city and the Sewer Department are operating lean and fiscally responsible, I just think that we, as a sum of a whole, there are solutions, but within the context of it's being presented, there's no solution available.
I just wanted to pivot and state that a lot of the issues that the city's facing have been delayed, as President Liz Allen has stated. A lot of things have been kicked down the stream for later. So, when you're put forth with a lot of evidence and explanation on why certain things have been a certain way, and this is us playing catch-up, it's kind of like you're between a rock and a hard place that you have to ultimately make the decision that will be beneficial for the whole city. And when you have a study session that explains exactly why certain increases have been put there, it's kind of hard to make cuts to a service that the whole city uses. And as Chuck has stated, I'm in favor of making sure that the nonprofits are paying as much as we can get them to pay, and this makes sure that we can, make sure that they're actually paying somewhat of a fair share to the citizens who don't have a choice in the matter. So, I'm in favor of this because we're playing catch-up for so many years of us not making sure that these increases have been steady and consistent. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say one more thing. In the last five years, I've seen utilities increase across, you know, we've seen these different numbers. I'm proud of the city that we can stand up and say, "Refuse and sewer are probably the two utilities that you've seen increase by the least in the last five years." Put that up against your fuel bills, put that against your gas bill, put that against your electric bill, put that against your cable. I'll put it against any of them, and I'm pretty confident that the city has done a better job keeping your utility costs low than almost any other entity. So, good job, Public Works.
I know we want to vote, but I think one of the sterling figures we heard last night was, for instance, the increase in cost for chlorine. I mean, these are things that, you know, we aren't out buying, you know, a whole bunch of chlorine at home. I hope not. But the things that are necessary to make sure that the wastewater is treated properly, it was shocking, the percentage of how high that one particular, not even a line item, it was drilling down farther into the line item. So, we, you know, we had Cam TV talking earlier about, you know, making sure that study sessions are available. So, if anybody wants to go back and listen to that presentation, I think you too would be stunned at the cost of chlorine, and I think was feric acid, was that the other component that had jumped up a lot, too? I'm not sure. There are other things that held their own, but this wasn't just looking at a line item, a number. This was looking down into what is actually spent in a particular line item, which was pretty informative.
There's plenty of money in the budget. All that has to be is moved around. We're not hurting the sewer authority. They do a heck of a job. Mr. Gracken, Chuck did a tremendous presentation yesterday, and I applaud him for it. I'm just telling you that as long as art money is around, there's money floating all over there. You have to have the guts to go after it.
Voting, Lori?
Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16323, and now known as Official File Ordinance 622022, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelsen? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? City Council passed Official File Ordinance 622022 by ye six, nays one. Council File Number 16324, Official Ordinance 632022, An Ordinance Amending the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, Part 9 Utilities and Public Service Code, Title 7... Part 9, Utilities and Public Service Code, Title VII, Other Public Services, Article 951, Residential Refuse, Section 95109, Garbage and Refuge Collection Fee, Increasing the Quarterly Collection Fee from 261 per year to 27238 per year. The annual collection fee shall be assessed against each dwelling unit and billed on a quarterly basis. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, council file ordinance, bill number 16324, and now known as official file ordinance 632022, be finally passed by City Council.
Move to table?
Second.
I'll second it.
Are we allowed to discuss a move to table, or we just have to do it, right?
A motion to table is a non-debatable motion, so you would just proceed with voting. And then if it passes, it would be tabled. If it does not pass, then we would go back and have discussion.
Voting to table, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson.
No.
Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
No.
Motion to table fails three to four. Actually, it's two to five. Mr. Witherspoon didn't say no.
Four, three. Witherspoon voted yes. The yeses on that were Brzezinski, Keys, and Witherspoon. I'm just repeating what he's muttering.
Motion to table fails three to four. Voting on the ordinance unless there's discussion.
I did just want to discuss that the, the, just do the math. So it's $11.38 increase per year, or $2.85 per quarter. And we did have figures last night. We had them actually earlier when we first got our workbooks on the budget that showed how Erie's refuse rates compare to neighboring municipalities. And we, we understand that ours are very competitive rates. Milk creeks are going to continue to go up. And I do think that because of the extensive study we heard about earlier that there's opportunity to address some savings, hopefully quickly down, down the road.
Any other discussion? Voting on the ordinance, Mr. Brzezinski.
No.
Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys.
I said no. That my no?
Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council passes official file ordinance 632022 by yea six, nays one. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16325, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,550,000 from unappropriate and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. These funds are from the multimodal transportation fund grant from PennDOT for highway and bridge products, projects. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance, bill number 16325, having been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16325 by yea seven, nays zero on first reading. Madam President, this takes us to new business.
Do we have a motion to move the balance and then separate?
Motion to move the balance.
Second.
Separations?
One and two.
Any other separations?
Just giving you a chance to vote against my appointment, too.
Yeah, separate 17 through, 224, you can treat them as one.
Any other separations?
Are we ready?
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Seven to nothing. We have number one, sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Dr. Sherry Mason, 821 West Second Street, Erie, PA, is hereby appointed to the Sewer Authority. Dr. Mason's term will run from 1/1/2023 through 12/31/2027 or the 1st January of 2028. Discussion?
I just wanted to take a second and boast about her credentials. For the Sewer Authority here, we are appointing someone with a PhD in chemistry that did her dissertation in freshwater management. So we're, and she's a city resident. So this is a new appointment that I was really enthusiastic to make. I reached out to her to see if she'd be interested. We had the other people that, you know, have applied and such as sort of a database. But I'm, I'm really enthusiastic about that one. So you all had a chance to meet her in the presentation here a couple minutes ago. So just wanted to take a second and point that one out because I think the rest of them are reappointments. So I just wanted to, just want to take a second and tout her credentials. Call for a vote.
Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes yea seven, nays zero. We have number two. A resolution sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Keys, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Richard Wagner, 4228 State Street, Erie 16508, is hereby reappointed to the Erie Water Authority. His term will run from 1/2/2023 through 1, whatever the first Monday is in 2028.
I just wanted to confirm a typo on the agenda. I'm not making that resolution. That's Mr. Brzezinski.
Okay, so that's why you separated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Rich is great. Just wanted to confirm it because I wasn't, I wasn't sure. And it caught my eye as I was looking at the first resolution.
What was the typo?
On the, on the agenda, it says that I sponsored his appointment, and that was Mr. Brzezinski.
You read it correctly. It's correct on the resolution.
It's just wrong on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, and I just caught it. I would have, I just didn't notice it when it was sent to us before.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Motion passes yea seven, nays zero.
Madam Clerk, we're missing a person. Shall we wait until it returns?
I think I could read them.
Okay.
I just should wait for a vote. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie, having been nominated by Chief Daniel Bezarni, is hereby confirming the appointment as a probationary patrolman at the current salary of $50,2591, and that the probation for one year from the date of appointment on December 19th, 2022. We have Mr. Ryan Palkowski of Erie, Stephen Harris of Pittsburgh, Kelvin Carrero from Erie, Brandon Large from McKeesport, Philip Monroe from Erie, David Knight II from Northeast, Joshua Semzuk from Erie, and Steven Matson from Erie. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to remind the board that, or the council, that these folks already have been accepted by the police department. And they have given their, wherever they've been working before, they've terminated work to come with us. So playing games with these folks would be a foolhardy thing to do.
Mr. Keys?
Well, so, well, well, it's, so there's, there's always a process to everything. And one of the things, when the city hires an officer, it needs city council approval. So the fact that they do things before they get city council approval is not the fault of council. Having, having said that, that, you know, we're allocating, you know, several million dollars of AARP funding to fund the additional police. Personally, so from a fiscal standpoint, I don't think it's the most fiscal responsible position because it's going to trigger a tax increase. And, and I know they said it's AARP money, but as, we're real good at chopping the city budget into little pieces and not looking at the overall city budget. We have so much money, so much goes to this, so much goes to that, so much goes here. And with the things, other things that AARP money that could solve problems, including things that are in our structural deficit. It's, so I'm a minority. I don't believe it's the best fiscal use of the money, but I am not going to stand in the way of whatever progress this is supposed to bring to our city. So.
I did, somebody, can I just say one thing, Ed, then? When somebody earlier, one of the speakers had talked about, you know, investing in youth and as an alternative to hiring police. But I did want to point out that I believe that the police department or the chief has asked for one fewer officer than was originally proposed. And that some, there is some, or three? Okay, three, okay. So three, three fewer. And we, not we, the administration has been working on a plan to free up money for a youth, I think it's called Youth Investment Fund. I'm not sure that I have the right language. We do have a session on AARP funding next Tuesday, 5:30 PM. So hopefully we'll learn more about that. But just to let people know that we heard your recommendations and concerns about, you know, where are we putting money toward youth programs? So you will be learning more about that. I don't have all the details. So I'm sorry, Ed, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I just, believe it or not, folks, the mayor and I are friends. We disagree on the two fees, but we like each other. The bottom line is, in caucus, he spoke very clearly that this is not going to affect the budget, that we are going to probably by attrition end up in the same position that we are. So without further ado, let's vote.
I was, I was just going to point out that you'd said three. We were supposed to hire 12 with AARP money today, and that's what's been said for over a year now. And, and the number's now eight. There was a law discussion back in June. I'll point that out as citizens being heard, but Liz already, Madam President already has. I, I still disagree with the idea. This doesn't have anything to do with the budget. It's one-time revenue sources of ARPA funds or water, you know, water prepayments, whatever those things are. They can stretch the budget further. And by spending those monies, rather than using revenue replacement, building up reserves, spending on stuff that has long-term benefits instead of short-term personnel differences. You know, in the last, in the last five years, we've seen two departments in our budget. You know, there's, we take someone out of the Department of Finance. We take a couple people out of Public Works. We get some transitions in City Controller's Office or Economic Development with some partial people. Otherwise, most stuff has stayed the same. But in five years, we've seen 14.4 personnel added to one department and 19 added to another in the midst of a decline. I'm not real confident, until the numbers demonstrate otherwise, that, that we aren't continuing in decline. Comprehensive plan talks about rightsizing. That's a continued concern of mine. But, you know, I, I welcome these eight new officers and congratulate them on their new employment.
Anyone else?
And one other thing you'd like to see is that crisis car. And that's a big thing we're talking about. Yes, I voted.
Voting on the resolutions, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Eight resolutions pass, yea seven, nays zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Okay. So can we start with committee reports with Michael going that way? And then, you know, wait a minute, I'm going to start with Mo going that way because I'm not sure how soon we have to get back to school. I didn't mean to jump ahead, but let's start with Mo and go that way, and then Michael and go that way. Okay?
Madam President, I have no report today. Just congratulations to the new officers that are being hired.
Thank you. No?
No report.
Chuck?
The only authority meeting I've had since the last council meeting was Water Authority. They were scheduled to increase their costs by 5% this year. It was, it moved up to 7% because of the increase of material cost. So a lot of our sewer and refuse costs, I already had those at the other authority meetings. So reporting that back. And then continuing to point out the, the delay on receiving sewer and refuse collections. Water collects that money for us. In order to, to watch their costs, they have less people in their customer service department, which also means less people turning off water, you know, making the follow-up to make sure that the bills are paid, which has led us to be about twice as much backpaid bills as what we had in March of 2020. So since COVID, that number's almost doubled. We're having less enforcement of it because of cutting costs. So that, that's a, that's a challenge. But those, that's all that came from the Water Authority meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Michael?
No report today.
I don't have a report just because at the end, it's the beginning of the new month, and committees haven't had meetings. I have one next week on Wednesday. I just wanted to make a small comment. I know that a lot of people have been stating that we have a shortage for CDL drivers. I just want people to think that it's hard to get a CDL license if you don't have your driver's license. And it's also been brought to my attention that in our Erie school district, if you have too many truancies, your ability to access your driver's license is taken from you. So I don't know what we have to do collectively, but I know that as somebody who didn't receive her license until 2021, when the pandemic- until twenty twenty-one, when the pandemic hit, I pay Transportation Solutions to actually be able to do their class where they let you use, um, their vehicle. They pick you up from your home and drop you off. The only thing you have to do is get to the exam. But it is a issue that I know from experience, communities of color have getting their driver's license. And it's because you're first generation, second generation American. Your family probably doesn't have their license to begin with, so it's not something that you are thinking is attainable, especially when you have to go to the PennDOT and have a registered vehicle up to code and all of the extra obstacles that are put there. So I just wanna make sure that we're acknowledging that it's hard to get a CDL if you don't even have a license. So what can we do as a whole to help our residents and our community members attain their driver's license to then be able to access a family's sustainable wage with a CDL is, um, what we need to start thinking about. Thank you.
Thanks. Ed?
Yeah, uh, we have, uh, we're gonna lose an awful lot of experience with Mr. Wells, the Civic Center Authority, uh, retiring. Uh, Mr. Pine, who is kind of been his, uh... Trying to find the right word, but anyway, uh, I think a very able replacement. We'll have him come here, uh, probably in January after, uh, Mr. Wells officially retires to meet everybody. Most people know him already. The other Port Authority, the search is on, and, uh, we don't have anything specific on it yet. Uh, thank you, and, uh, say good night for me.
I just had a couple of things. Um, last week, we had the unveiling of the sign at Seventh and Cherry to honor the late Charles Kennedy Junior. And that was part of the Harry T. Burley Week. Uh, I attended a, a special screening last Thursday night of Safe Harbor, which is a documentary that was done twenty years ago for WQLN by Lisa and Rich Gensheimer. And I must say, I learned so much about, um, not only the Underground Railroad and, uh, Erie's role in it, but also about historic African-American communities throughout Northwest Pennsylvania that existed, um, you know, centuries ago. So the, that DVD is available from the library. Uh, if, if you haven't seen it, it's twenty years later, very relevant, um, check it out. Um, we appointed a number of people to boards and commissions today, and we have a couple of other openings. We do, we have had a process in place where, uh, interested people, volunteers can apply. If you Google City Grows and City of Erie, you can find the application, uh, process there. It tells you how many minutes it takes to fill out an application if you'd like to be considered for a board or authority. I think one of the things we probably need to get better at is letting, uh, the public know. Uh, it, it's hard even sometimes for council to keep up with when these appointments are expiring, but to, to let the public know where we actually have openings that are coming up. So we still, uh, we need some candidates, and I do have some applications for zoning hearing board. Those, some of those applications came thanks to Curtis Jones Junior for organizing a get-together of, um, yeah, mainly, uh, uh, black and Latino residents, young professionals who might be interested in serving. I tried to, for council, to kind of forecast which openings council will be responsible for in twenty twenty-three, uh, but we'll do a better job of letting people know where we need your services and what kind of time commitment is, is required there. I want to thank Jasmine for, uh, bringing to our attention, um, sort of the things that, that if you don't have the lived experience, you, you don't know what some of the barriers are and some of the challenges are, even in terms of paying to get a driver's license, making sure that, you know, that, that you have money to be able to do that. But there was something else that she mentioned today, um, the form, uh, the Lake Erie Food Rescue that she follows on Facebook. So I think that's just another example of how, uh, we communicate in different ways, and, and knowing about that, I made a note here. I, I learned something new, uh, that way. Um, I've also, uh, prepared for the city solicitor, and it will be shared with council, the number, various ordinances that I think we have on our plate, not just for this year, but for early twenty twenty-three. So I'll make sure that council has that information and that we can have, uh, we'll have a, a smooth transition to whoever the next president will be. I have no intention of trying to up, hold up the transition of power, transfer of power to a new president. I think that's all that I have on my list of things to share with, uh, our audience out there today. Uh, do we go to Teresa next? No report?
Very briefly, just touching on what Councilwoman Allen raised. Uh, I recently sent a number of ordinances to you, um, and I have another one coming. Um, and just in summary, from the top of my head, we have a, the one that'll be coming soon will be a vacancy foreclosure, uh, registration ordinance. We have an environmental advisory council or committee ordinance, uh, some permit fees, um, that need to be addressed. And also, um, an ordinance amending the current police complement and, and kind of promotion procedure. Those are all, they have not been sponsored by any council member. Uh, they've either been brought to me from a council member or from the administration. I'm just circulating them, so I want to make sure that everybody's clear that they're not going on the next agenda unless you tell me they're going on the next agenda. I, I just don't want there to be a misunderstanding of like, hey, I thought that was gonna be on, or why, why did this get suddenly thrown on? What I didn't want to do is, when they came to me, I wanted to prepare them, circulate them to you, rather than have them suddenly show up on an agenda. Uh, so that's why I circulated three of them. Mr. Nelson and I have worked, uh, well, he's done all the work, but, uh, with the vacancy foreclosure, uh, ordinance, I have it, uh, virtually ready to go. Uh, but, uh, Ms. Doyle, Kathy Doyle from our office, uh, has left the city, and so things are a little crazy in my world right now, but I will have that circulated, and, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Ed, do we have to formally accept the DEI report, not as an ordinance, but do we have to accept that?
I, I don't know that you formally accept it. I mean, you've, you've now received it.
Okay.
And so I, I don't see any reason to take any official action.
Okay. And I also believe, we talked about, uh, I, I did attend the Historic Review Commission meeting. By the way, there's some meetings next week, three different meetings for public input into the Historic Review Plan. I don't have the, uh, we have a press release about that, I believe, Mayor. So keep that in mind because, uh, we had, um, uh, there's opportunity there for, for, um, Historic Review funding and everything for some, uh, adaptive reuse or whatever. Anyhow, those meetings are coming up next week. We have a press release about that. But we do have to have a public hearing, uh, you told us, for a change, to designate the PACA building as a, um, historic overlay district. So that's just something else that we have to have on our, uh, agenda. I wanted to make sure that...
That would be another ordinance. Anytime you're gonna designate something as a historic building under our current, uh, existing ordinance, that would be a zoning amendment. And so in order to do a zoning amendment, you have to do an ordinance, and you would also have to hold a public hearing.
Okay. And for some reason, this is jogging. I think we've had so many meetings, I forgot that I've actually been to other meetings. I did go to the public hearing on Monday morning about the, uh, the funding that the Department of Community and Economic Development has to address homelessness issues. City Council will be asked to adopt that plan, which we have a study session on at our December twenty-first meeting. Again, not an ordinance, but we will be asked to adopt that plan. And then I think that the deadline to apply for that funding will be March thirty-first, after it's already gone through HUD. So I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, but I'm just trying to keep council informed on what's coming up in the near future. So, anything else from you, Ed?
No, that's it. Thank you.
And Mayor, any reports from you?
Just, I'll be very quick because I know there's more work to do here as well. I do really appreciate you all, uh, uh, passing those two relatively small fee increases. That's what we want to do going forward. I've talked to you about this before. We like to do the small increases we need every day because we think, over the long term, there'll be less increases that way than waiting four or five years and then doing a, a big increase. So I appreciate that. Also, thanks very much for approving the, uh, eight new officers. Uh, you know, two of the major issues in the city right now are domestic violence that's going on and, uh, the number of homeless that we now have, and the fact that the homeless are getting much more active in approaching people for money and that sort of thing. And we have existing police officers that will be freed up by these eight new ones, who will be spending time in those two issues primarily. And I think that's gonna make a big difference. And again, I'm totally committed, I'll say this as many times as we need, we're never going to take more, any more money out of the general budget to fund these officers. If we need to, we will get back down to that. I'm hoping we can grow the city, grow the income, and keep that in place. Finally, that Historic Preservation Plan is, the meetings for that are next Monday and Tuesday. And, uh, there's three of them. We're gonna do a press conference on this tomorrow at ten as well. There'll be a lot more detail there. But I can share with you that, uh, on Monday, the twelfth, the Historic Preservation, uh, Plan Community Workshop will be from seven to nine. And that's at the, uh, New Life Spirit Revival Center, which is three fifteen East Ninth Street. Then on the thirteenth, there's two of those meetings. Uh, the first is in the afternoon from one to three. That's at PACA, which is fifteen oh five State Street. And then the third meeting is in the evening at seven P.M. on Tuesday, the thirteenth, and that's at the Cathedral of St. Paul, which is one thirty-four West Seventh Street. Again, we'll give all that information in, in detail. If you, if you couldn't get it, I'll be happy to give it to you as well. But thanks very much.
We are not adjourning this meeting. We're gonna move into a, a finance session. But I think, everybody wanna take a break? Yeah. Bathroom break, whatever. I think we should do it here. I think it's, it's easy. I think it's, it's easy. After school today, we have some, a retired teacher here at least. One educator had to go back to school. But thank you, Lisa, for taking some more time. I'm hoping that we can talk about some of the things that you still think we need to cover for the budget and can hear out council members who have ideas on changes they'd like to see made. But we'll try not to be laborless either, because I know people have put in a lot of time on the meeting today, the meeting last night, the meeting coming up on Thursday, and another meeting on Tuesday.
In your budget book? Page 89. So the five-year projection starts out with the 2023 budget. And it's basically a trend analysis. I mean, we can't go into the kind of detail for '24 through '27 that we do for the '23 budget. So we basically use percentages on these numbers. So, and as has been mentioned in the PFM, our revenues are going up in the neighborhood of a percent, or right around 1%. And our expenditures are going up closer to 2.5%, 3%. We do it by line item, what's reasonable in light of the economy. And I didn't include any additional inflation. I don't know what to expect there. So if you look at the, I'm going to point out a few things. The first section's the revenue account. And this is just a summarized version of your revenue expense report. If you look at the revenue, the appropriated, appropriate restricted fund balance is on the last row of the revenue section. Thus far, that has been the water lease prepayment money. And we're appropriating that to balance the budget without a tax increase. You have 3.2 million in '22, 3.2 million in '23, and 3 million in '24. And then that money is expired, is gone. We have no more lease prepayment money after 2024. The other thing I want to point out is that the last line on this schedule is excess deficiencies of revenue over expenses. And as you can see, that lease prepayment money in 2024 is not enough to balance that budget. So we're looking to be $2.2 million short in '24.
And Lisa, that was different than what we originally had forecast for 2024 in the 2022 budget. Is that because we took part of that money to make up for the lack of the fund increase, correct? Lack of the rate increases? In our 2022 budget, we were forecasting a $1.3 million deficiency for 2024. And now it's 2.2 million, 2.266.
Let me speak to that for a second. A portion of that, yes, obviously. But take a look at 2025 and compare those two differences as well. We are, you know, 2024, yeah. We, it went from 1.3 to almost 2.3. But in 2025, it went from 6 million to 6.5 million. In 2026, it went from 8.7 up over 9. In each case, we, it's not just that. There is other factors in this that is increasing that structural deficit.
The economy right now and the inflation rate right now is having a lot to do with that. Any questions on the general fund five-year?
Yes, can you just, we've discussed this before. Would you point it out?
Okay. The '27 has a, I didn't reduce the '27 budget revenue and expense for the ARP expenditures. So it's in both sides. It's in the revenues and the expenses.
So in other words, our revenue includes reimbursements for additional personnel, as does our expenses. So with that deficit, if we were to, specifically, if we were to keep the police officers that are being funded with ARPA money, we would have a $14 million deficit rather than what's advertised. Now, obviously, the mayor has assured us that he will not be able to keep it unless we grow significantly. But that is the number it's going to take to grow in order to afford these additional personnel positions, is grow enough to offset 14 million in revenue.
But we also, I think we also have to put into context the fact that, you know, when people complain about taxes, we know that we have people who come to the podium and, you know, wave around their school.
going to take to grow in order to afford these additional personnel positions is grow enough to offset 14 million in revenue.
But we also, I think we also have to put into context the fact that, you know, when people complain about taxes, we know that we have people who come to the podium and, you know, wave around their school property tax bills, which we aren't responsible for the school district budget. The school district has decided to continue to raise taxes based on its, I think even maybe beyond what the financial plan recommended. So I think, I think we also have to recognize, as much as we've tried to avoid raising property taxes, that that's also, not saying, you know, keep officers or keep that compliment or anything, but I'm saying that it's unrealistic to think that we would go for years and years and years without raising property taxes. We have people who are, we have union contracts, we know how much of our budget is going to union personnel and also to personnel in general. I think Lisa's tried to stress, we don't have a lot of flexibility in terms of where money is being spent. So, I mean, unless you want to be like the county executive, the current county executive and say that there's never going to be a property tax increase, I think that would be foolish to say that. Because how do you operate a municipality without that type of revenue? I think the one thing that I had hoped is that maybe there will be property tax reform at the state level specifically to address school funding. I don't know that that's going to happen. I don't think there's been a decision yet in the fair funding for schools case. That would certainly at least help taxpayers in the city of Erie if there was fair funding for schools, even though the school district has gotten more. You look at the schools, the schools are being upgraded. The Erie School Board has made a commitment to saying, "We need to do this so that our children in our schools have the same advantages that students in other districts have." So I'm not comparing this, I just think it's important to let people know that to think that we will never raise property taxes is just burying your head in the sand.
I just, I'm the only renter who currently sits on Erie City Council and luckily, I don't have property tax to worry about, but I do know that we as a, you know, city, we have the highest property tax in a far radius of area map-wise. So it's just, when my generation is talking about buying houses, they're not talking about buying houses in the city. They're talking about buying houses outside the city because the property tax isn't as high. So I just want us to be mindful that, you know, currently, we have the highest property tax going on. So just be mindful that the younger generations are not buying in the city and it's going to be hard to get them to actually commit when our property taxes are so high. Just something to be mindful of.
It's a good point. I think that Iroquois, though, the Iroquois School District or Lawrence Park, where they're landlocked and they don't have any, you know, and Wabtec or GE previously has gone before the county assessment board to have their assessment lowered. Mill Creek is now going to be hiring, I think it's eight paid firefighters, if I have that number correct. So at some point, that ring suburb is going to start catching up with the kinds of taxes that the city of Erie has. I mean, I don't know how else they're going to be able to do it. We do have a paid fire department and the others don't, so.
Yeah, I was going to mention that and the fact that public safety is a really large portion of our budget.
Yep. So I just wanted to remind the people that we, the flat taxes were purchased basically with the water lease deal. We did not have to raise taxes because we received $95 million in a one-time influx of capital. That's why taxes have not been raised, but a four-year tax abatement or offset of, without being raised, cost us $95 million. So, so it wasn't free and it wasn't that we just didn't raise taxes. It's cost us, it was, the cost was $95 million. And then another 80 million in lease, actual lease payments if we had not taken the prepayment. And so, and so they were short-term gap fills and along with another $76 million that we received in ARP funds, which were also one-time funds. And so the fact that we haven't had to raise taxes, it came at a price. And it's not that we just didn't raise them, we bargained or bartered for no tax raises and take the prepayment and use it to offset those costs. But what we do know is that it's going to end in 2024 and we, without an influx, another influx of capital, we're going to be at a structural deficit.
So what is your solution? This is, I'm waiting to hear the solutions. Do you want to cut employees?
So.
Please, please give us the solutions.
So, well, you just.
Specifics.
Well, this council just punted away one of the only solutions we have. So we just won't go back into that.
What was that? What did we punt? What did we punt?
So an additional eight officers is going to cost the city roughly six, five to six million dollars over the time of the ARP grants. And so that's the only solution money that there, that there is. We have, whatever ARP money that we still have, that's the only solution I have other than we have to find a way to grow our revenue other than, obviously, with our taxes and with the fees that we already have.
Oh, I mean, I know you're trying to bait us on some of those questions.
No, no, I'm not trying to bait. I have heard for the last couple, three meetings that, when's council going to have the chance to make some cuts in 2023? But, so tell me what those are.
All right. I have some suggestions. I haven't actually, I don't think I've had the chance to so directly talk to other council members about any of these. But what I did was I looked at the budget from five years ago and I went through each of the departments and counted how many the personnel has changed. So for example, we added a quarter of a person to the controller's office because we're having a transition there. You needed like a, you know, there's, there's a, an overlap of staffing for three months so that we could train someone up. Same sort of thing in the Department of Economic and Community Development. We have two people less in Public Works because of moving stuff to enterprise funds, one person less in Finance, and we probably are due to give someone a raise there for the months of not getting one and doing a bigger job. You know, like, most of the stuff is just one or a quarter point here or there, two, two people down in one account. In the last five years, there are two offices, one added 19 in personnel and the other added 14.4 in personnel. And some of those positions, we haven't filled yet. I mean, the easiest way, and the 2.2 million deficit we're looking at next year can be offset by not adding those new staff positions and we will then have enough in our reserves to get through next year as well without a raise. Those particular spots are in the mayor's office where the staff went from four to, including the Office of Communications, 10. I compared that with Allentown where they have an office of five, but one of those is a grants writer, which we put in our planning department. I compared that to Redding, which also has a manager department and a staff of seven between the mayor's office and the managing director. I took a look at Scranton, which only has four. They asked for a communications manager and council did not give them that. And then Bethlehem has three, but really, they have two more temporary positions. So in all those cases, we're looking at like five to seven in staffing and we're looking here at 10.
Chuck, how does that relate, though? You went back five years. When did the Erie refocus plan come out, which specifically said we needed to have a planning department?
I actually did not.
Are you going to go back before that? Because I think that, we paid for a comprehensive plan. A planner came along and said, "You need to do this, you need to build capacity here." And if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying is, "Let's throw that out and get rid of all the things that have been done."
Thank you for giving me the chance to clarify that because I very specifically avoided pointing out the additional staff in the planning department when making this reference.
But the mayor's office has also reorganized since the new administration came on and the mayor can't be here too. We are going to talk about that tomorrow night.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm giving you a hint as to what I'd like to talk about tomorrow night. And it's open for discussion tomorrow night. I mean, I want to talk to him about it. I actually left the planning department out of that. So when I look at the new staff positions, I said that that department has added 14.4 positions. They moved planning out of Public Works into the mayor's office and I'm making reference to six positions he added instead of 14.4 because it's particular in his office that I was comparing. I did not talk about the planning department because I understand how that's impacted by the comprehensive plan and I was avoiding that.
Okay, so.
So thank you for giving me the chance to clarify.
But you're talking tomorrow, so tomorrow night, I believe that two of the initiatives that the mayor's office created were the position of the community outreach, the liaison to restore trust between police and the community, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's 10 positions.
And also the New American position?
Yes.
So are those going to be on the cutting block for you tomorrow night?
No, no.
Especially in light of the fact that we just got a DEI report that talked about the need to be more robust in terms of.
Yeah, the two positions I'm talking about, I'm not actually talking about cuts, I'm talking about not filling new positions in this case. In this case, we are adding a planning director and we also have a current position that's open, which would bring us down to being the most staffed mayor's office in the state of comparable cities. We would be the most robust, but it would still be two less than what he's asking for. That's just a quarter million there.
Chuck, so what two positions are going unfilled or what would they, what do they involve?
Well, the managing director that they're asking for, for communications and then Frank's position and asking them to reshuffle things around and find a way to get those responsibilities covered with eight people, putting them a little more than Redding, which has seven and they're the biggest.
I think that I'm going to speak up in favor of having a communications director. We have so many untold stories. We do not have someone who's out there shaping the narrative. I think a lot of times we've compared ourselves to Lancaster. I like looking at Lancaster because they have one of the most diverse councils in, city councils in the state and they have a communications person. And I looked up the person's LinkedIn qualifications and also what that person is doing for Lancaster. And I know I'm not pronouncing it the way the Lancaster residents pronounce it. You have to make it a little bit tighter the way you say it.
Yeah.
I think that you need to go back to the DEI report, which recommends a communications strategy. So, and a communications person, so.
Yeah, Redding, Redding has a communications person as well. It's not an uncommon thing. Scranton asked for one and their council shot it down. We have a communications department.
But Scranton is also in much worse shape than us and Scranton has been teetering on the edge of bankruptcy for years. Are they even out of their act?
Act 47. I mean, we're, we're in early.
But let's not compare ourselves to Scranton unless you're looking at the office.
We're in early intervention and they have a revenue budget of our, about 30% larger than ours in revenue.
So what were the, the other department and the other positions?
The other positions, obviously, the police department with a 19-person increase in personnel. Now, we don't, I'm not talking about cutting anyone, but we did, we do have some replacements that haven't been refilled yet and we did have one more that was supposed to get hired today that didn't. So between four officers and two people from the mayor's office, we don't have to raise taxes next year. That's enough numbers to do it. And I'm open to any other suggestions, but those are my suggestions. Four less would put us at a position of, like Redding has 166 officers, you know, that our numbers are.
So I guess I'll get Teresa involved. No, but one of the other places I suspect that we have places where we can make changes is in like some of our service contracts. You know, I haven't reviewed them all, but we get them every, you know, every month, you know. True story. So for instance, I know a place that, okay, I'll just say it's where I work. But anyways, we had people who come in and check the fire extinguishers every month, da-da-da, we pay them so much money, da-da-da. And then one day, you know, they actually shifted that on to the security department and saved a lot of money. And so it's a matter of some of these things that may, are being done in this building and in the city can be shifted to other persons as opposed to paying outside contractors to do them. And I think that's a discussion that, you know, we should have, you know, department to department. What else can you do with the manpower that you, that you have?
Staffing, not manpower.
Yeah, with the staffing that you have, you know, I think that's a conversation that can be, so, and so some of these departments have ways of making money. And so even if it means additional staffing, so where my hard line is, if you want an additional employee, tell us how you're going to pay for them. Or are they going to pay for themselves by providing a service that's going to save the city money?
Can I ask a question about something I don't understand a whole lot? There's a risk management account. How much is in there and what's it for?
The risk management budget covers three different types of insurance, basically. Hold on, let me find that page in our book here. It's on page 85. Okay. The workers' comp is the first, Chris, Chris did a pretty extensive presentation on all this. The workers' comp insurance, property and liability insurance, and the third grouping of insurance is employee health funds. So that includes the group insurance, the dental and the vision.
Everything we pay.
Right. Pardon me?
Everything we pay?
Everything we pay and they get contributions in from the money that we withhold from people's paychecks, their contributions. And we pay out the health insurance claims. We're self-insured.
So there's about, what, 2 million in there?
I'm.
I don't have it in front of me now. I was going, I left the book at home.
Okay, our employee health plans are budgeted for $15 million. Our liability budget is 1.5 million and our workers' comp is 1.2 million.
Thank you. The other question I had was, are we all aware of the 18% raise that administrative assistant got on the fifth floor? 18%.
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant to the mayor. Went from 76 to 89, something like that.
I would suggest that we wait for Renee to cover all of that.
Yeah, that's what, she'll be here tomorrow night. Back in terms of risk management, it just reminded me that last year I suggested, and I was shot down, that if we were going to be an example of where you could cut, that we eliminate the healthcare option for council members. And that went nowhere, so.
Big savings there.
I would just like to comment. I think that with us being told that there's not much room for us to be able to make cuts due to salary and wages being what they are, that I do appreciate Chuck stating that maybe us not filling positions that we don't need to fill might be a way to save funds. But I would also like to look into the fact that if raises are being issued, then council should be in the know on the amount, just for the simple fact is, when it comes to budget time, we're gonna be asked to approve things, to then turn around and either yes or no it. And I am not in favor of making the city have to be in a deficit for salaries to then turn around and have to get rid of people or be guilt-tripped into not getting rid of people to then increase our taxes. So for me, it's just, let's be very conscientious on how much money realistically we can afford to spend yearly and not overextend ourselves by hopes of, we want people to come to the city and we're doing everything we can. Because right now, it doesn't look like that's the direction that we're going in. And to overextend ourselves is putting us deeper and deeper in the red. And when it comes to salaries and wages, you kind of can't wiggle your way out of that. So let's just be very conscientious of that.
Lisa, can you just speak to the, I believe we have information that on the percentage increase for non-union employees, wasn't it 2%?
Two percent.
And I do want to point out, though, that, I mean, I think it's good that we look at the salaries to see if there are any outliers. Because last year, the former finance director gave himself a substantial boost. And we also know that the position of deputy treasurer has been, was, I think there was an 11% raise there. So there have been things that are not consistent with what other management employees have gotten. I think last year it was zero, wasn't it? Or was it 1%? Wasn't it 0, 1, 2%? Whatever it was, there were supposed to be guidelines for what those increases were.
It was one and a half last year.
Okay. And I do think that there's an option to follow the, to look to the controller's office, which did a plan for training a new person to come in for a set period of time. We've been told in the city treasurer's office that there needs to be a new deputy treasurer trained. And that training, I am not sure when it's occurring.
How can you back off on that, Liz?
The person is.
Weren't you supposed to have CAS in here to talk?
But we didn't have, we didn't have the solicitor here this morning. We couldn't do an executive session without the solicitor.
Right, okay.
But it's, we can only talk about the personnel person in executive session. We can talk about the position outside of executive session. But I think that we should take a look at that line item and look at the, like, a one-quarter body at that current salary of $75,000 for, you know, maybe three months into 2023. And then that salary drops down because you'll have somebody who doesn't have as much experience, who is theoretically being trained to take over that position.
Now, one thing that I want to add to that conversation that everybody might not be aware of is that we're in the middle of a really complicated transition from our old, from our accounting software. We're upgrading to the next level. And the treasury part of that is very complicated. And the current deputy treasurer has an extensive IT background.
Right. But the way to handle that, Lisa, I don't mean to interrupt, a way to handle that might be by a contract. When we've had institutional knowledge that has left previously, and it was criticized, but we had the city clerk left, retired, had a nice retirement package, but came back for a year as a consultant. I think the fact that we have somebody who's on a payroll here and a payroll for the county at the same time, I think there, I think there are alternative ways to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, I'll let the administration speak for that and CAS. But I did want to make you aware that we do need his services, at least until March.
And then we can, we have to have.
We need him through the first quarter because that's how long the transition's going to take us. And regardless of how long it's going to take him to train his successor.
Well, I still think then possibly we should look at a contract rather than a full-time employee working at nights and weekends. That's, I'm wondering, when is the other person being trained? Is there a trainee coming in and having, adding overtime to the current employee's salary? We don't know about that either.
Overtime in the budget. The overtime would show up if it was being done in.
So is the, are you aware, is the trainee, if there is such a trainee, being trained without receiving overtime?
I'm not aware of any overtime.
Okay. Is there, are you aware whether there's a trainee being trained?
I really can't say.
When the trainer is actually here on nights and weekends?
So I think we should defer those questions to either the treasurer or the deputy treasurer themselves. They run that department. We, you know, so, well, everyone's responsibility.
I tried to ask the questions when the treasurer was here. I did not get the answers I was wanting to hear. I'll be happy to ask the treasurer to come back and explain how the training is going on. And if you'll recall, we did not have any kind of a clear answer on when that, when there's an ending, end date in sight. If you, if everybody here is so concerned about the taxpayers of our city, I would think that there might be more than just me concerned, well, no, Ed is concerned, too. He's mentioned it. That somebody is employed by, in two full-time jobs with city and county tax dollars.
We do know of at least one other person.
And we knew about that, though. And that's, that makes sense.
And it is not a single one-off. And two, the objection was that it was a budgetary session, and as of right now, we need a deputy treasurer, and it's not adding any additional.
Keep, hey, any taxpayers listening, pay attention to what this man is saying, justifying this.
I'm not, we have to pay a deputy treasurer. And as of right now, the person who is doing the job is, is being paid to do the job.
And train a new person.
But he's not there to train a new person.
And the person sent a resignation letter and has not followed up on it, so.
So, so I think that that is a, definitely something we should take after the treasurer. Because, you know, if I understand directly, the deputy runs the staff and the program, but the actual treasurer makes hiring decisions and firing decisions and personnel decisions.
Maybe we don't need a treasurer. That's the option. No, don't laugh. That was recommended to me a few years ago by somebody who used to be on council, so.
I don't know if we need one. So do we need a treasurer as a third-class city?
Yes.
But we can set the salary.
But there's some, there's some different things to it. First one would be Home Rule Charter, which does not require a treasurer and controller. A lot of them have an audit general instead to more consolidate it. You still have an elected position over those numbers. And then the other thing is, we do elect the, do the salary, so there would be, you can defund the position or fund it at a lower rate as a, but at some point, it seems almost punitive, not, in the context. I think, like, like I'm speaking of with the mayor's positions or any other positions, I don't talk about who's filling those positions. I talk about what that department needs to function. And the treasurer's department, there's, there seems to be no question as to how many people they need to function. I think everybody seems comfortable with those numbers. They haven't changed for years. And then beyond that, the responsibility of filling those positions is up to an elected official. So I, I think that he has the appropriate amount of staffing. What he chooses to do with that staffing, I believe he's accountable to the voters for, not necessarily to our budget process. I believe that if you find his positions to be unacceptable, I think you should run someone against him or run against him yourself. I think those would be obvious conclusions. I'm not suggesting or endorsing such things.
I'm not running for treasurer, but I do think that this is an issue that the public did not know about until I brought it up. And I think that in, we talk about transparency, in the interest of transparency, the public needs to know that information.
Yeah. I mean, it's been talked about this early on. I think it could make the primary pretty interesting in a few months. I think that's what should be handled.
He's termed out anyway, isn't he?
No.
The point is, and Liz does make one heck of a good point, how can the deputy treasurer train the next deputy treasurer when he's here by himself at night doing a heck of a good job? I have no problem with Eddie. He's one heck of a good working guy. CAS cannot train the next deputy because he doesn't know what the next deputy does. That's the bottom line. And I'm not throwing rocks at CAS, but the truth is the truth.
You can't talk about throwing rocks.
Um, with.
I'm sorry, Rocky, I'm sorry.
With the treasury, with the city treasurer's department going under a massive update and going through the process of transitioning from one way of doing things to another way, I think that until after that transition is done, having these conversations are very impactful to the people who are working in these positions, but also kind of makes you feel like the work that you're doing isn't validated. So let's just make sure that we're acknowledging that, you know, Mr. Williams might be doing two full-time jobs, but he has not lapsed in any of his needs for the city treasurer department. So as long as, at this point, we're still in transition, I think that we should honestly wait until that transition is done before we're sitting here saying, "This is wrong, this is wrong." Because right now, he's the only person who knows how to do it. And to sit there and say that we have to train someone, yes, we do. We need to train the whole office. And from what I understand, they're gradually training the whole city treasury office to be able to work this stuff.
Do you know when that training is occurring, though?
Probably after everything has been done in March.
Okay, I would ask somebody from city council, then, to volunteer to go in after hours and see who's being trained in there. I think that's the only way to, to find out if that's happening and to, so we can report back to the public on when that training is occurring. I think you should also, we should also consider whether we do this as a contract. I think the third thing is that council needs to know that what has occurred over there has had ramifications elsewhere in the building. When somebody gets an 11% increase and other people are getting 1.5%, we're gonna have people tomorrow night come in and talk about eliminating open positions from the mayor's office that the mayor and the administration believe are necessary to keep moving the city forward. It's just, it's very contradictory in my mind to hear council people say, "Well, let's..." You have to understand that this occurred, the new job occurred in January of 2022. So we've had a whole year, and we had a resignation letter that was withdrawn. So I think it's really critical that people understand the timeframe involved here.
As long as, if I can change the subject a little bit. Police chief is here, and there's been a couple of questions, chief, and I didn't get a chance, hate to put you on the spot completely here, but when we had you in front of us, you talked about the 1.4 million that we had for overtime. But then you also made a statement that other council members jumped on, that 700,000 of it was reimbursed. Does that mean that we have 500,000 that we could take out of that overtime budget? Please explain it so everybody knows.
The 700, almost 700,000 that's reimbursed, that's over top of the 1.4 million budget deal. That's all reimbursements coming for additional work that department officers are doing.
Over and above the 1.4.
Right.
In other words, if we hadn't had the reimbursements, the overtime would have been 2 million.
Oh, okay.
2.1.
Clarification, thank you.
If I may, just ask a question. I know that in the past, Lisa, since you, with bond issues that you generated, I know that between fire and police, we've been doing a lot of work, putting together grants that we're getting in for equipment and stuff, that eventually, if we hadn't got the grants, we would have come to the city. And in the past, the practice would have been, we'll put those into a bond issue. Knowing that, and I don't know all the details of the water deal, but I do know that there's a large amount of that prepaid, the money that the city is paying towards bond, bonds, with us saving the budget money through grants, will the city's bond obligations be going down? When was the last bond? I think you just took out a bond for sewer, some sewer work, correct?
Yes.
Prior to that, have there been a lot of bonds taken out last?
I think we have, we have had that in our work.
We're actually bringing a schedule up right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we used 80 million to pay off older bonds that we could pay off that had reached their maturity. This is, this is what remains of our bond obligations. The last bond that we took out was in 2019, and we will begin paying that back in 2026. Right now, we're just paying interest.
So potentially, the city, if we don't have to take out another bond for a few years, potentially, the money going towards the bonds will come down?
Well, right now, it's down. Right now, our bond payments are 2.8 million. And they will be going up in 2026. Oh, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Debt, which one's the debt? The debt service fund, our debt payments for '22 and '23 are 167,022 in '23, 215,000 in '23. So we're just paying interest on those 2019 bonds. And come '26, we have to start making principal payments, according to that, now we have the debt schedule.
That leads me to the second question I don't want. So, to the paydown schedule, because they put 80 million toward paying down the bonds. And so, and I know it was on a schedule where it all couldn't be paid down at one time. So what's the suspense date for where all the 80 million will be actually paid onto the bonds?
I can send that out to you. We have a schedule. And your debt schedule is on the page 48 of the council book?
This book, right?
Yeah. So do you want to look at the rest of the five-year projections? We kind of stopped.
Yeah, we did.
On the general fund. On the general fund. And just back to that, um, general fund, five-year forecast, I will be reducing the revenues and the expenses in year 2027 for the ARP reimbursement and the ARP expenditures. By, I will be reducing them by the same amount because that's the plan right now. Um, the ref, the refuse and the sewer, I think we've gone over those a couple of times. Do you wanna skip over that one, those? Uh, what, one thing I'll mention is that we balance these two budgets, and you'll see rate increases, small rate increases every year in order to keep this happening. And, uh, the, these are healthy budgets here. I mean, we're not losing money in the future.
Ask a question.
This is actually for Chuck, since you'll know this. So, uh, in order to raise 6 million dollars, uh, how much would we have to raise property taxes?
It would be just under 2 mil. So on a hundred thousand dollar house, you'd probably be looking at 190,000 dollar increase, or a 190 dollar increase on property taxes annually. A mil's usually about 3.5 million dollars in revenue raised. But you asked me that question, they literally know that better. Is that, that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
Thanks.
I, I, I'd have to go back to my office and look at some of my documents, but that sounds right. Um, okay, anything else on the sewer or refuse? And we just talked about the debt service as well, so, um... One other thing I brought with me that I thought you might wanna take another look at, because I went over it rather fast last month, was the, um, the, the expenditures in the general fund. And, uh, I gave you, uh, you might recognize this document, I gave you a breakdown of everything that's, uh, fixed or contracted versus, um, I guess Renee would call them discretionary spending. Meaning that we could choose not to spend the money on office supplies or repair and maintenance supplies or repair and maintenance services. I mean, I don't know what would happen if we chose not to spend that money, but, I mean, realistically, we're not obligated to spend that money. If you look at all the amounts outlined in yellow, those are all the costs that are related to labor. And, uh, at the bottom of the second page, or towards the middle of the second page, you'll see a corresponding yellow amount that gives you the breakdown. Uh, salary and wages are 49.18%, and personnel and benefits are, are, uh, 41.42. For a total of 90.6% of our budget is devoted to staffing. I've also color-coded all the other expenditures in blue, in diff, various different colors which correspond with the middle of the second page. Um, so I'll just go to the middle of the second page now. These line items are pretty much fixed. The insurance, the transfer to debt service, uh, the contingency, and the community service items. The community service items are just above in green. It's the COG, uh, EDDC, human, Erie County Human Relations, the EMTA, CAT TV, the, uh, zoo, regional chamber and growth partnership, real estate taxes, and summer rec. And that's 1.2 million. The other fixed costs that I, I think that we have no control over are in blue, and that's your fuel, communication, postage, heat, light, power, all our utilities. The street lighting and traffic signal, that's more utilities, that's the electric. So, uh, we have no control over those items. If you add all of this together, it makes up 94% of the budget. The, that, the only control we have is over the labor portion of it. We, we really can't change, um, oh, we bid these things, we try to keep them down, we use, um, we, we use the state purchasing system when we can to get discounts. Um, we're, we're very vigilant about trying to get the lowest price on everything we can. And we follow our purchasing policy. Now, on top of all that, if 94.65% of your cost being fixed isn't enough, you have to go into our professional services and other services and look at all the contracts that we have that we can't really do without. The sewer and refuse billing collection costs, we have to pay the water authority to bill for us and bill to collect. Uh, the building inspections underwriters, they do a lot of the inspections. US security, uh, the parking authority, our cleaning service, um, Berchheimer to collect the taxes, our legal department, Eldricken. And our financial software costs about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Our auditors and, uh, oh, there's another security company for the, uh...
So, actually have a question. I'll, I'll field it to you and to the chief. You know, some of the things that, uh, the, our consultants talked about was making it easier for applicants to take police jobs. And I, you know, uh, so, so other places not here, you know, give conditional letters of employment, um, when, uh, you know, like, say, people who are scored and qualified and, uh, still need to be, go for training or go for some other things that, those are some of the things, things that we can make, changes we can make in-house. And so, that being said, you know, uh, you know, uh, we probably could do something with, you know, our provisional officers, if we had them, to run security at city hall or something like that at a, you know, as opposed to, I hope they're not listening, as opposed to a contracted service. But, uh, those, so, you know, when I say that, everyone else is figuring out how that...
Glenn has a gun, Mike.
Huh?
Glenn has a gun.
I know he has a gun, uh, but, but, uh...
This, this meeting is public, on the, it is being heard, just so you know.
So, but, yeah, so, but everywhere, there's been a, uh, that, uh, where, where people are asked, you know, in, who are not in public service, to do more with less. And so, I'm just, not that that's something I, I'm just throwing it out there as an ideal because it covers, like, it's two birds with one stone. One, it makes it easier for someone to possibly, you know, uh, you know, uh, get, get a police job and then, you know, uh, and then we could give them conditional employment while they're doing it, or, you know, uh, but anyways, uh, that's just a thought because we have, because the bottom line is somewhere in this building, we have to start doing more with less. And, you know, one of the things, you know, uh, I, uh, you know, alluded to earlier was that there are things that city employees are capable of doing, uh, that, that we pay for. I have, I haven't investigated it yet, but I suspect if, if it's, happens in the real world, it happens in government, so.
Lisa, are we so...
Anything?
We'll talk to civil service about that.
Do you believe civil service is one of the departments that'll be here tomorrow night also?
400,000 out of the garbage.
At least that budget will be looked at tomorrow night.
Pulled it up.
Yeah.
Okay, um, that's, that's all I brought with me to discuss. I mean, I was pretty much here just to answer questions and listen to your deliberations.
I'm unfamiliar with the process. I've kinda been watching Scranton just for fun, uh, because they do their budget like a month ahead of us. So they, they get their budget, then you can see all of their, um, their edits, basically, like their, their city council, you can see everything their city council changed on it. Um, so I, just out of like curiosity, I've been watching that, see how other places do that. Is, what, what is our process from this point on? Like, do we just...
I have been looking at, you know, county council has worksheets, but we've, we've never developed such a, such a process, so...
So do we generally, and this is generally, this is me, first year on the job, never having done this before. Do we just kinda do like a take it or leave it thing? Do we kick it back and forth? Like, do we say, hey, there's probably four people that wanna get rid of this or add this? Uh, is there anything like that that we have a mechanism for?
We were supposed to do that yesterday, I think.
Historically, the city clerk would be up here, we would be down there, and we will, a council person would say, I would like to cut, and then it's voted on, if there's four votes, it's recorded, and then we move on until we're done. That's what we've done historically.
Thank you, sir.
And let me...
We haven't made a cut in the four years I've been here.
Let me...
Thank you for the institutional knowledge.
I've been here 14 years.
I take back the two fee increases from the last year. Those are cuts.
I just wanted to remind you that you made a couple of additions to the controllers' and the clerk's budget, and I think we can offset that with some savings somewhere else. We'll be able to comb through and maybe look for an offset somewhere. But, um, that, that should be on the table, I guess. I mean, I can get you a list.
That would be great, Lisa, yeah, for tomorrow night. I think, I think one of the other things that, that we have not done, and everybody now has a copy of PFM, is that, and Chuck, to your question about making cuts, I will tell you, one of, on a previous council, those cuts that I would suggest went nowhere, or the, or the, the, you know, doing, you weren't laughing, were you, at that?
No, nobody's laughing.
One of the things that I had asked about was the golf courses, because they were losing money. And you, then mysteriously, they were, they were making money. We would hear, well, the weather was bad, or the weather was good. But we don't have, um, and this is, has been one of the areas to look at, was suggested in the PFM report, is to, we don't have a broken down between the golf course, the nine-hole golf course in the city of Erie and Downing, which is in, in Harbor Creek. So I would really like to spend the next year going through all these recommendations from PFM that were never acted on, where I think we could become more efficient or make cuts. And I'm not trying to pick on the golf course, I'm just telling you that the frustration was that you would make a list and then it would get shot down, like, mostly what we would hear previously were reasons why we could not do something. And I'm gonna bring up the, the, I mean, and this, again, I know people need healthcare, but when we were looking for cuts, I said, well, we spent $40,000 in the city council budget, I think it's 40,000, on health insurance. Let's eliminate health insurance, which of course did not make me popular with one other person on city council. But the idea that we haven't tried to make cuts, I think, is not true. I've tried. Uh, we also looked for ways to increase revenue, and I'm gonna bring up one of them because, Chuck, I know you've been, you've met with the, the zoo people, right? With, um, the board and, or with the former executive director who's now, um, doing development. So one of the things we had asked a few years ago was, could we start to charge for pavilion use at Glenwood Park? Because Mill Creek charges, Harbor Creek charges, but Scott Mitchell pointed out to me when I was there last week, he said, but our pavilions don't have, um, electricity and, and... ...other kinds of services that you get. So I was like, okay, well, that, that's not a revenue generating idea. Um, but we, and we tried to come up with new revenue ideas. I believe that we just heard that, um, we're gonna be pursuing more pilots. Is that true, uh, Lisa? There's a better, there's conversation going on between the school district, the county, and the city on, uh, additional pilot, uh, programs. There's one of the other things that was mentioned in PFM, which is to actually, um, we used to get donations, right? Uh, separate from pilots, and haven't those like dwindled down to like hardly anything? And I think Pittsburgh has like, like a, a fund that you, you could donate to that, and I don't know if that was referenced in PFM, but PFM talked about possibly having some kind of fund where donations could be made. Sometimes for specific purposes, those have really dwindled down. So, um, and I guess I, I get, no, how do I wanna say? I have been the scourge often of the administration in previous years in asking questions. I guess I'm satisfied that, that this budget is, that there's some things in here that we have to do in terms of initiatives. But I do think that we have an opportunity now, going forward, whether it's talking about how to, how to save that money in, um, you know, the, the dumping fees, you know, how, how, where are the, where's the innovation going to come from? Um, I think, uh, with the, the new planning director, I've seen innovation, you know, you, you act, this person followed up with you on your suggestion for vacant, uh, property fees. Um, code enforcement, trying to get the, the tools into the hands of code enforcement people so that those technology tools, I think we have to do a certain amount of capacity building and then say, okay, we built the capacity, now we need to start seeing the results. We need to see efficiencies, we need to see innovations, we need to see people in various departments stepping up and saying, yeah, I can do that. I mean, even the chief didn't, he, he said, hey, you wanna talk about Michael's idea about trainees, we'll talk to civil service. So he was, he was open to that. Um, you made a suggestion last night, you were talking about, uh, fuel capacity, do we need more tanks? And that one seemed like it could have like a lot of different environmental aspects, but you had some other, council had some good ideas last night. I'm not trying to say ram something through, but I'm thinking Chuck talking about Scranton doing its budget much earlier. We should be doing that. I mean, we got the budget earlier, but that's still not, in my mind, early enough. If, uh, think of what an additional month of time of having that would, would be able to, um, make a difference in terms of doing the kinds of things that all of you envision need to be done or could be done.
You know, we had a choice to get some revenue going if we ever did something with the Airbnb.
Yeah, that's right, right.
We just let that sit on the back burner for how long now?
Oh, I think one, yeah, that's, the, I, idea had gone out of my head, but when you talk about...
All I asked Renee for was a policy to police them, because legally, you can't stop them.
We, we do have that, actually. We have a revised, the planning commission has... But we talk about revenue, you talked about the, the composting, and you said last night, could Gan and Small Business help the, um, Public Works develop that plan? So there were like fresh ideas that were generated last night. I just don't know that we can implement them tomorrow, but I think, I've been in this before. I was the one who had the flip chart, and said, what about this and this and this? And the discouraging thing was, none of those things came to pass. But we can't forget about your ideas and your, all of the ideas here, so...
I have one more question, though.
Okay, or do you have one more idea?
Maybe, well, I don't know, Michael might be able to help us. Uh, is that a... Uh, is that a campfire or a bonfire out at the airport? Greg Hayes sent his letter of resignation? Greg's a pretty solid guy. Just saying. What's going on? Do we know, Mike?
I do, some of it I won't comment on, but, uh, there's, there's, there's factions within the board and within, uh, the airport itself. And so, uh, they, you know, maybe as, you know, they're independent authority, but maybe the city and the county can weigh in on trying to find an amicable solution between the different factions that, uh, one, solidify our airports, you know, uh, positioning the region as, you know, as important and entity to both groups, and that we want it to grow and we want it to prosper, and we do not want adverse actions taking, you know, against our airport. But that being said, also, uh, accountability level, uh, has, has, has to be looked at. Whether they are doing things right or wrong, I don't know.
Maybe we should have men here to tell us. Maybe we should have men here to tell us.
We, a couple of years ago, we had, we had a good presentation, um, on the Erie Airport doesn't get subsidies. We were asking, well, how come, you know, Youngstown or, I forget where else, could offer much cheaper flights? And I think whatever the example was, it showed what, um, you know, that they were getting a subsidy, but it also showed that our cost per, I think it's deplanement, I think is the term, was higher than, than other places. Um, there's also, um, been some good stories recently, well, bad news stories actually, about, um, cities, uh, I'm not talking about really dinky little cities, I think Dubuque, Iowa, losing its, its service altogether, uh, because of, um, the, the, what airlines themselves are deciding. But I think that's a good idea, to put that on there, Ed, uh, to have a, an update on what's going on.
To see what's going on.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's volatile, I don't, I've known Greg for a long time, I don't know well, but I, when I was at Central, we used to get a program together for the kids who were interested in flying, and he would do it for free, basically.
Wonderful programs.
Yeah, so it, uh, it bothers me, because there's a lot of good people out there. And I don't know who the, who's causing the uproar over there, and maybe it's not our business, but sooner or later, it's going to come in our lap.
Well, are we, are we nearing the end of a wrap-up time? I'm hearing that, if I heard correctly, one of the things we would like to note about tomorrow night are the numbers of employees and whether any positions that are vacant can be held vacant, would that be correct?
Yes.
That we would also, um...
Percentage increases too.
Oh, percentage increases for the non-union employees?
Yeah, I mean, the city, people should know.
All right, let me, let me get those two things down.
Madam President?
Yes?
Just like, uh, to make a public statement that I am not in favor of cutting anything in public safety.
Absolutely not.
Nothing. That is important. I think that's more important than anything else. The worst thing, one of the worst things that could happen is a fire truck break down on the way to a fire. Our police officers, we need the police officers. And my statement comes from some personal experiences. I lost a brother. New York City was killed by a double-barrel shotgun. Case still not solved, and I'm pretty sure by this time it's swept under the rug. Grandfather lost in the fire. Public safety is important to me. Thank you.
Well said.
Is, are there any other bullet points, though, for tomorrow night? I wrote down, uh, percent increases for the management employees by position, not by name necessarily. The number of employees, and if any of those, uh, positions could not be full, possible revenue growth with composting and, oh, the, you wondered about the, um, the Airbnb, we do have the, you should have received the planning commission, we have to have a public hearing about that. But I think it'll also be instructive tomorrow night when we hear from the planning director about code enforcement and what, what his vision is for, for taking care of some of those issues. Is there anything else that, like overarching?
Yeah, that, uh, if you are increasing, uh, manpower, how are they going to be paid? Are they adding, you know, actual monetary value if you're going to, uh, expand your department?
Like what the rate of, like sort of the return on investment? Is that how you...
Yeah, so...
All right, I see, okay.
I'll probably get Lori mad at me for this, but Mel mentioned how cuts were made before.
What?
The city, city clerk would be here to do the tellies of four to three or whatever, if there're going to be any cuts on, on Thursday night. I don't know. Does anybody have cuts that they want to talk about?
I, I presented my, I got, I got six positions.
I think one of the things we have, we would have to make sure, I, I think we could ask Ed Betz if he could be here, because it's a study session where we traditionally haven't voted. You, I think you would have to take official action at the December, December 21st meeting or have a special meeting.
I'm just asking, yeah.
All right, so are there any, somebody had also talked about overtime, is there anybody that is...
Can I put in for some?
Yes, yes. Is there, are there any other line items, though, where you would say, this is too much? Lisa's going to make the adjustments and find some room for the ones where we were adding a little bit. Are there any other specific line items where you're eyeing?
I will...
Sort of an across, I don't know, across the board is the right word, but...
I do think some of them are...
All right, well, okay, good work. Now, now do I adjourn?
Yeah, you can dabble.
I don't know. Are we, are we ready?
City Council adjourns at 12:33 PM. Mr. Bezinski, Ms. Flores, Ms. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.